Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen together. Let the record show that we have two out of three selectmen. Rich Strayton is at a job site. Will be joining us late, but he'll be here later. So I call this meeting to order.
And I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Board of Finance on today, Wednesday, February nineteenth. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, Parks and Recreation. All right. We have the Chair and the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Morton. Thank you for joining us.
I'm Pat Morton. I'm Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Eileen Earl is our Director of Parks and Recreation. And we're ready to go.
So basically, I'll run through accounts. I do have some pictures to show, kind of give you a visible idea of what we do. I know that you guys have on your accounts, everything is like salaries is all lumped into one big number. So that big number encompasses our, my salary, my Assistant Director and the Secretary. It also has our Park Maintainers, which take care of all seven parks plus educational park on a daily basis. So this is one of the fields that we do take care of that's up there. These are, this is Bennett Park, which we maintain the pavilions and the inside, which are including restrooms. We have these buildings as well at McCowr, which include restrooms as well. So and the building at Bennett has been, part of it was donated and part of it has been remodeled with a kitchen. So that has to be cleaned on a regular basis from the April through end of October now. So it also includes our camp staff, which has our programs, which our day camps are in July. The camp directors, the assistant directors, the counselors, and that includes staff that is under minimum wage, which is covered under minimum wage, which I know you guys have probably have all known that minimum wage is going up steadily for the next, to 2023, which we have to incorporate into our budget, which affects the counselors at start as well as the supervisor staff going up. So that is in there. It also is our teen center program is in that salary and our before and after care programs. And before and after care are at Johnson, Rockwell and Berry schools. And our before care here is at the Municipal Center. And starting next September, with the change of the grades at the elementary schools, our numbers for before care will go up because third, fourth and fifth grade will need before care based on the bus schedules that we've been informed from the schools. And we anticipate that number to go up from forty kids that we presently have registered, forty, forty-five kids to sixty or sixty-five kids in before care, which is from seven to like to get picked up on the school bus. It also includes our overtime account, which is our weekend cleanups, our weekend maintenance of fields, cleaning bathrooms at the parks and at the track facility, and any tournaments or anything like that that we have in town that is in those that accounts there. So it's a pretty large part of our operating budget. It's a lot of our, our staff that we have, so.
Eileen, excuse me.
Yep.
Are those existing employees being discussed either now? Are there any additional?
No, no additional staff. It's a, it's a, it's an increase due to minimum wage. It's an increase due to full-time staff getting their raises.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
Just to understand, the sixty-five, is that spread out between the three locations? You said it was going to go up in terms of the amount of kids? Or are you expecting that all here?
Oh, all at before care. That is just at before care, which is housed here in the mornings.
Okay.
That will go up. We anticipate probably twenty kids. The other three schools for after care, it will be an adjustment because there's a new grade at Johnson, but those kids will now not be at Rockwell and Berry, which are in our numbers now. So we think after care will stay the same. It's before care that will change due to the time change of starting of school.
Is there a weekly fee associated with that?
It's a daily fee.
Daily fee?
It's, morning care is ten dollars a day and after care is fifteen dollars a day presently. We are relooking into our fees at the present time, but those are the fees that we have right now.
What period of time is that after school? I mean, fifteen days?
After, after care is when school gets out, depending, like at Johnson, it's between like two forty-five and three to five thirty. The, the after care is open till five thirty. And the before care is seven to the bus, pick them up approximately about eight thirty.
It's a reasonable fee.
Well, we try to keep it reasonable for the, for the citizens and it covers the cost of the staff. It brings in a large number of our, our money.
What kind of revenue does that generate? Do you have that?
The income that we anticipate for before and after care is...
That's one of the bigger, bigger numbers that we take in, before and after.
But you know, I'm saying, you know, there's such things as adjustments, like Eileen's looking at it as far as...
For after care, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and before care is about fifty thousand. So we're talking about over two hundred thousand dollars we bring in in revenue of our six hundred and eleven that we estimate.
You're going to look, relook at the fees?
We are, we are revisiting all our program fees this coming year.
Good, thank you.
Eileen, oh, I'm sorry. You know, just looking at this, there is an, an area for revenue and I just think across the board, all of these departments, it would be really helpful, is there any way that we could get that, like what you generate as revenue?
I can, I can have somebody go make you copies right now.
Okay, I'm just saying, it would be interesting to add it into this program, but I mean, that's a...
Yeah, but that's not my, I might, that's not my...
I'd just like to see what you take in also.
Yeah, it just would be great, of all the departments, honestly.
So, you know, we looked at the numbers the last day or two. And I don't remember exactly what we put in, our estimated income for this fiscal year, but at this point, we're about forty, forty-five thousand dollars ahead of what we estimated we would be. And a lot of that is before and after. It's, it's the programs generate all the money.
Yeah.
And the big one is actually the theater program, which it's, it's in the black every year and that generates a lot of income.
Well, for a hundred twenty-five a week, that's really good for people who work in families who need...
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah. We try, you know, and we discuss this almost every meeting, but you know, we go up, what are the other times, should we go up a couple here, you know, a few dollars here, five dollars here, ten dollars here?
I think it's a good service, I mean, if it's covering itself and it's helping people out.
Well, that's, you know, we're here to, you know, work with the people.
And they're both parents working, obviously, that use that program, right?
Right, right. It's, it's the parents that drop off in the morning because they have to be at work at eight and then the ones...
Single mom, single dad.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there's a lot of people who can, you know, can't afford traditional daycare because that's so expensive.
And it's also somewhat flexible where they can pick Monday, Wednesday, Fridays one week and then, but they have to do it a month in advance. But to do like a daycare where they make you commit to every day and you have to pay for every day, this is a little bit more flexible. We're also flexible when schools offer intermurals. They could go to that intermurals and come to us till five thirty or our after-school sports until five thirty.
What do you do during a snow day? Does that...
We don't have it.
You don't have it?
When there's a snow day, we're, right. And we do that for all our programs. It's, it's, it's easier. It's just easier. It's like, why is it okay for somebody to come to a activity for Park and Rec when the school superintendent said it's closed? So, all right, so I'll have those in a minute for you, the income monies for you. Is there any other questions on the salary part?
We'll interrupt you in another minute.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, so office expense, we did not raise any, oh, we did, office expense, we did raise a little bit because I've looked into getting a computer software program for my Parks Department, which is a work order, work task system inspection for a program that would keep, like I would assign a task to a certain staff member with a certain amount of, certain equipment. They would do that task. They would log in saying they completed that task. They would go to on to the next one. It's a program to help with that. It would, all our playground inspections would be done that, facility inspections, bathrooms inspections, all that. So if they go to, say they go to McCowr Park and there's a problem with the toilet, they can log in and say there's a problem with the toilet. I would instantly get an email saying there's a problem and then I can assign it to someone or I can get it to the proper people. Right now, we do phone, we do text, we do paper, we do, this would be an all-inclusive program. It also is getting all our assets. We would have an inventory of what we have at facilities, what needs to be changed, equipment, how old the equipment is, when it was last serviced. We would keep track of all the equipment when it's serviced, when it needs to repair. So that, to me, is very important for our maintenance aspect. And like if there's a call into the office saying at a playground, there's a broken swing, they can log in and then I would automatically get that and then I can assign that to a person right away, so.
That was, that came up already in the presentation, Matt. Was that on your, on budget with this new program? Someone else talked about it. I mean, I'm new at this, but it came up last week.
It wasn't, it wasn't a work order. It's the permitting. What I was talking about is the online permitting system.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's separate.
That, boy, I swore it was, because we talked about Park and Rec.
But it's very similar to, like, it would all be on the computer, like, my staff would either have a, an iPhone or phone that would be able to log it in or a tablet. And like if there's a playground, like, and I would assign that playground inspections are done on the fifteenth of each month and I would have that task and then it would remind me, I need to assign that task to a person.
It's, it's anything that's repetitive, like the ones that are done...
Yes.
Yeah, so would they even help if it works?
It's, it's the ones that, once everything's in there.
This is, yeah, this is geared towards parks.
Sure.
So we've talked about, yeah, that's the, definitely the concept.
I got you.
And I think this would definitely help our maintenance department and myself keep everything on, yeah.
And it's good with accountability. You know who took the mower or the, or the weed whacker out? You know, they checked it, if there's a problem, well, they had it because they were assigned to it. They were assigned to do this job and, you know, and it's, it's, everything's online.
So, Eileen, do they use their own phones then to log in?
No, no. We would provide them with like a, a phone or a tablet through the town. And then they would like leave it at, they would leave it in the, at the municipal, at their maintenance garage.
So is that additional expenses?
No, that would be through Verizon. A lot of times we can get those free. Brad and I have talked about it, so.
Free phones?
Yeah, some. But it's, it's part of like, you know, it's part of the package of what the town has, so. It's not any, there would no be, this is the software, the yearly fee of the software and there wouldn't be any additional cost to that.
So does this program, the software, because it's an increase, what I see in equipment maintenance is about thirty thousand dollars?
Oh, no, no, this is under office expense. It's the three thousand dollars that it goes up in office expense.
Office expense.
Office expense, the second bud account.
I know, it doesn't look like it went up.
Two oh one?
Oh, like it'd go farther to the right.
Yeah, it's ten thousand one seventy-one, so.
It's only thirty-two percent. So twenty-five.
Yes, and that's a yearly cost.
It is weird, it mine doesn't show that. And Jane does not, strangely.
Okay, so, continue. Okay, so maintenance and supplies. I, I increased it back to the, what I was requested last year, which was the one twenty-three six two nine, which includes the fertilizing, the maintenance equipment, like any tires or anything that we have to replace, our field maintenance supplies, paint, grass seed, anything like that, park maintenance, playgrounds, dog park. Doggy bags are very expensive and we go through about, almost ten thousand doggy bags a year.
Wow.
At least, I would say. I've shopped around and I've saved almost three thousand dollars by finding a different vendor, but it's very, very expensive. Wood carpet for all the playgrounds, service contracts, like for the mowers, to have our large mowers go to Torrel and get winter services, irrigation, the plumbing, we have to have someone come in and open up the wells and close the wells and open up the track bathrooms. And we have to have our tanks pumped and our holding tanks at the school complex, at the track building, the snack shed, they both have to be pumped on a yearly basis.
That's still on equipment maintenance?
That's under, yeah, it's under maintenance and supplies, the service contracts that we...
Right, and not compared to services, for the, for the setting, so.
Yeah.
One question I added, you know, we had talked about the fertilizer and stuff last year. The PD has, the PD has five thousand dollars in their budget...
Yep.
For wood chips and whatnot.
Mulch and stuff, right.
So that's not covered in your budget?
I hate to say it, it is.
It is?
The mulch, the mulch, I don't have it as a contracted out, but I mulch the properties in town.
Right, because we...
So and I didn't, last year was the first year we've had the police station. So we all kind of had to see how it was and what it was and how things did. So if we need to mulch it, it can be put on our contract with my staff doing it. And like we mulch the front of this. There's a community care day that they are looking for stuff, the schools are looking for things to do. That would be a perfect thing for them to do. But last year I didn't do any of that because it was all new.
Right.
It was brand new. I mean, it was open and then the flower beds, there were problems with the plants and there was things like that. And in my, it also recommend fertilizing was the other thing in there, which in, right now, based on the monies I have in my maintenance and supplies, I can, again, didn't want to do it last year because it just opened. I have it, got a price from the gentleman that does all our fields and he can do it within the price that I have budgeted to fertilize it, so.
That's great. Wouldn't it make sense to, while you're out with the mulch?
Right, right.
Right.
That's, you know, and if he has any other extra requests, sometimes he likes, he likes to have it like a, a better spring cleanup or better fall cleanup. I think we could try to accommodate it if it's within reason and I can cover it in my budget.
So, so you've got mulching out the flower beds and cleanup in your budget?
I always do, I always have that in my budget.
All right, so that can...
For, for all the town buildings.
Take it off of...
What we do is we, we use our own staff and then...
And I just buy the mulch.
Okay.
And how about the mowing?
The mowing is contracted and that's in a different account in my budget, the mowing, because it's definitely a larger...
Why doesn't your staff do it? I mean, it's not like a lot, a lot of grass.
Because of the, it's a lot more than when it was the old, the police station and so, and there's a lot of sidewalks to read and trim. So we contract that out and that's what we did last year and that worked well.
You don't have enough time to do it?
Yeah, I don't have enough, I don't have enough manpower to do that, so.
Does that, that Ventrac mower make it easier?
Ventrac mower isn't used for that type of mowing.
It isn't?
No.
It's not a...
The, the, right now, it is not.
Okay.
It does, it does free up manpower though.
It, yeah, so we, it does free up man, out men to do other tasks that we probably have not been able to do. So we figured out that, we used the Ventrac this past year so far, like seventy-nine hours total, which we think saved us, like if anyone knows the middle school, the soccer field that, the bank that's behind the football field, that would take three staff members two days to trim on a regular basis. It takes the Ventrac probably a half a day and you can probably do it once a month compared to having staff, three staff doing it twice a month or three times a month.
So that frees them up.
To do rather than...
So, Eileen, last...
That was...
Other areas, like some facette that have been dying and don't look very good in the front field, we were able...
Reflects the savings we've had by investing in...
Like I haven't had to have staff members.
Mm-hmm.
If I want to keep on doing the work that the Ventrac has been doing, I would have to hire like two part-time staff members.
So, Eileen, have, do you and the commission look at other equipment that could get us away from these contracted services where, you know, if it's an initial investment, you know, just starting over fifteen thousand for, you know, one of the big stand-on blowers and this and that, where eventually we can actually wean away from contracted services and we see, you know, a windfall down the road where we're, we're reducing it, you know, we're having our initial expense of fifteen, but if we could lower that budget, that's a savings every year. Do you guys look at that type of equipment?
Well, we, we, in the Ventrac, just an example would be the Ventrac we have in our capital item, the Ventrac, the vacuum system, which is a leaf pickup system, which would have a mower on it. So we could do the leaves at the police station with that if we had, because...
Just for me, like, if you could show me for, for myself, when I'm looking at the budget, that, look, if you, if you give me this piece of capital equipment, I can reduce my contracted service by X amount and you, you know, you forecast that out and you say, okay, well, that makes a lot of financial sense. You know, is that something that you guys can calculate or not really?
We could calculate probably once we use this Parks program because then we're going to have a real fixed hours that it takes. Because the, a lot of the contractors because of the small work, trimming the sidewalks, trimming the, around the trees, trimming around, that takes manpower, not necessarily machine power. And that's where it becomes a, and it may not be a problem in June and July and August when I have part-time staff, but when I go down in September to four full-time and one staff member and I have a full-fledged schedule of high school games to get fields ready for, that's when the small work of trimming and things like that becomes a problem. Contracting out frees us to keep our athletic fields and the, and that to the level that we want to keep them at.
It just seems like, like when I heard five thousand dollars in the police department budget for mulching, it makes sense to think that you're consolidating it with Parks and Rec because you're kind of out there doing it. So anyway, what Brian says, to consolidate it and realize savings, it just seems like...
The chief did say that no one did anything there last year, so we want to put it in our budget. But what Eileen's saying is you're going to do it this year.
Right.
You know, there was a warranty on plants and you didn't, you didn't...
Right, but when they moved in, they had fresh mulch in there, so why was it going to put more down and spend money and time?
Maybe not as thick as you would put it, but it's going to look nice here.
Right, because it was just put in.
The mulch was.
So, but, that's fine, okay.
But, you know, to your point, the Ventrac was one item that, that saves manpower, you know, we could reality...
Because that's doing a Berkshire corporate part, right? You guys do that?
Oh, we do that with one of our larger capacity mowers now, so.
And there's areas that do look nicer in town all year long because of that machine.
Yeah, because it gives us the staff that can go to spend time at the Blue Star and that kind of thing, yeah.
Eileen, I'm sorry, one more question on the police station.
Last meetings, we realized that police station landscaping, et cetera, shows up in three different spots, so we'll figure out where it belongs. I think what we're hearing from you is it's probably best for all lawn care and the like to be in the Park and Rec budget, not necessarily in some of the other budgets as an ancillary expense.
Right, I would think that one location of this department that does it, ninety percent of its duties are mowing, right, but...
Tough question I'm about to ask, but...
Right, well, I, right.
Are there any services that you can think of that wouldn't fall in your group and maybe would be in either Police Department, Building Maintenance or Highway Department?
No, not, not that I recall.
Okay, thank you.
The only other would be is that in the Board of Ed's budget, there's the mowing for some of their areas around their schools, is in the Board of Ed's sixty account. That's been there for years, but not in my account.
Not duplicating.
Not duplicating duties, no.
Okay, thank you.
And snow plowing is, because the police station has snow plowing contracted, correct?
Yes, and out of the Highway Department. It's in the Highway, it's in the Department account, yes. All the snow removal, even like, like sidewalks, like it's all in under Highway. But my staff does it, but their overtime gets paid out of the Highway account.
Yep.
Do you have any idea what the cost is for contracted services for snow removal, what we're spending a year on that?
Oh, right, it's twenty thousand dollars.
That's for the...
For the police station, for plowing and sidewalks. Plowing the parking lot and the sidewalks.
But not in your budget and it's in the Highway?
It's in the Highways' budget, yes. It, I started in my budget last year, but it got moved to Highway.
But that's paid to a private contractor.
That's paid to a private contractor.
And what about for the schools? We do that ourselves?
No, the schools has a contract, but what I believe...
It's in the four sixty, you'll hear about that soon.
Yeah, yeah.
And this has saved money this year on snow plowing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, dues in education is our education program and to let you know that it keeps my certification up. I'm a certified leisure professional. I am also in March going to become a certified playground inspector. I'm taking the course to do that. And my assistant, Rachel, goes to a camp training program in March as well and she gets ideas for camps as well as programs from there. So that's that, which is no increase in there. Clothing allowance is the same. Contracted services, we did go up again. We had the Clark Park in there as a contracted out and I did put that money back in, but I also, so it is up the nine thousand six hundred dollars, so.
And that's just the cost of each of the contractors?
Right, well, there's a cemetery of fifty-five hundred, which we pay to the Cemetery Association because they take care of the South Street Cemetery. There's a lease for a mower of fourteen thousand. There's a truck lease for twenty, two thou, two hundred and eighty-one dollars in there. And then there's the ten thousand for the police station and then there's, added in is ninety-six hundred for the Clark Park.
So we're, we're not cutting Clark Park?
We did last year, but I was going to try to see if I could have it contracted out.
So do you have this broken down anyway or are you just telling us?
Usually we have that.
I know, I mean, usually there's a subset of the specific expenses, that's what I'm not seeing.
The footnote, Eileen, says that it's contract mowing for Clark Park and Police Station.
Yeah.
That's what the big increase was, right?
Well, yeah, the nine thousand six hundred is Clark Park increase.
Just Clark Park.
That's the increase, yes.
So, and I'm just curious, if we were able to manage it ourselves last year, why do we want to contract it this year?
Because I want to try to get other things done and keep our, you know, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, there's always something that doesn't get done because we have to spend whatever the timeframe that's down there at Clark Park, but...
Which one are you referring to?
Clark Park.
Clark Park.
Oh.
So.
So that's ninety-six hundred right there.
Right.
Yeah, EDC has, her staff can get in there once a month and that's about...
Or once a week and sometimes they want it done twice a week.
Yeah, or, yeah, the, once a week and they've, and that's, if it's, if it's a warm rainy season, it grows and they, they're not happy with the appearance of the park. So they put a lot of pressure, yeah.
It's not, it's not an area where we mow, like, where we mow, like every, it could be every six days or it could be every twelve days, depending on weather and everything. So it's one of those areas that has not been a priority in the past. So, and so now they're, they want it as a priority. So, and again, at certain times of the year where May, June, April, May, June is a real busy time, hard time for us where staff is lower and everything, so trying to get to an area like that...
And that's when the grass grows, the grass is...
Right, and then there's, there's just a lot of field prep and field work and maintenance, field maintenance that has to be done, so.
So would it, what would be the cost comparison to hire a college kid who's home in May, right, to do that as opposed to contract it to...
We couldn't, we try that, that would be like a part, another part-time person in that salary, which it would probably be a sort of it, I mean, for that timeframe, you know, it's, it's, you know, depending on...
I'm just curious because, Eileen, it might be nice to give a college kid...
Well, we do that now, we hire the college kids.
Yeah, I know, I know you do, so like one extra, if, if you have other people doing other things and have the equipment available, right, that's the...
Right, right, you know, and they're, they're trained on the equipment that they have. So it could be like another four thousand, it could be five, four thousand dollars compared to ninety-six hundred.
Just to understand, the Economic Development Commission doesn't contribute anything to to the mowing, you guys take care of it all, and they're not happy with it getting cut once a week? I, I, I don't know, it seems.
Well, I think we do need to.
The dog park, which is about a thirty-one thousand dollar project. Um, but we are working with the do- friends of the dog park who are willing to help raise money, hopefully offset some of it, but, um, we're looking to have at least like fifteen thousand available to enlarge the fence area. And if we do that, we have to move the well at McCower, which is eleven thousand, because we can't have the well where it is because of the dog park. So, it has to be within a hundred feet of the dog park.
Have, I, I just questioned, have the friends of the dog park, um, spoken to you and said what they estimate they can raise?
They're, they're in the process of doing, I've met with them twice so far, and they're working on ways to raise money, um.
Right, but have they set a target? I'm just saying, do they?
Their, their target is the le- the fifteen thousand for the fence.
That's their way to walk.
That's their target.
It's more than that.
Eileen, what's the, what's the need to enlarge the dog park?
Because of the amount of dogs that we have using it. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot bigger than I thought it would ever be. Like, you could go down there on a regular basis and there's twelve to fifteen dogs in there, and they're large dogs, and the area is small. And so, if we expanded it, it would just give the dogs a little bit more. And it's not expanding it to take away from any other part of the park, like, it's just the way the, it wa- the well is the reason why we couldn't do it in the first place, so.
Is there any property down there that doesn't have the well issue that it could be moved? Would it be cheaper to move the dog park than to?
Well, it would take away the only open field that's left by the, between the pond and the playground.
Ah, it means kids.
Never mind.
So, um, and then the, um.
But I, I guess that my question is, like, are there complaints, are there issues? Like, what, cause it's nice to have a bigger dog park if you can, but eleven thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend moving a well, right, so.
Right, but there could be, there's, it's just, there's a lot of dogs and someone could get the dogs, one could get hurt and the people watching the dogs could get hurt. It would, you know, so that's the reason why. There's, you could go down there on any given time and there's at least fifteen dogs in there on a pretty regular basis. At first it was two dogs, but now if you go, there's a regular set, routine dogs that are there every day.
Is the well a health concern? Does the health department require?
Yeah, I, the, it's a re- health requirement that it has to be within a hundred feet. The fence, the outside fence has to be a hundred feet from the well.
Crazy idea, could there be two dog park, do two adjacent, with, you know, bypassing the well, could that be done? You know, I, for some reason, I have this small dog, big dog idea that, I've heard of that.
Well, we could, we could get, like, there is a small dog se- there is a small dog section.
Section.
That we could move, I guess.
I'm just saying.
And then the, and the, take that fence down, that would open that other, and we wouldn't have to move the other fence at all.
All right.
But.
I bet, yeah, I think.
So, but then it would have to find a location for the small dog park.
Right, I'm just.
So, and then that's another fence. That's still like fif- you know, that cost.
See, where, where it is now, that, that land was never really used for anything.
Sure, it's just, you know, just talking, all right.
How much is it cost to drill a well? Since I sit on two U.C., you know, I mean.
It's eleven thousand dollars the price I got.
It's not a very deep well then, is it?
No, it's, and it's from Anderson.
That's used for, that water is used for?
Just for the bathrooms.
Okay, not drinking purposes.
We don't have a water fountain, but it has to meet the code for the, uh, drinking services. It has to meet that requirement by the state. I have to have it tested and everything, so.
Eileen, I'm just struggling a little bit putting the pieces together. What we have in front of us shows an increase of twelve thousand dollars, right? It goes from forty-five thousand to fifty-seven thousand. And the footnote has, or attributes that amount to tree work, replacement of trees, park improvements, dog park enlargement, and then fitness. Those are kind of four things.
Right.
Or at least, I look at them and I see four things. Can you help us with, what's the breakdown? How do those four things relate to the twelve grand increase?
Um, well, it's basically probably the, the fitness equipment is about nine, between nine and fifteen thousand, depending on which one we have.
And where is that fitness equipment going?
It would go in one of the level areas that below the basketball court. There's a level area there. It also could be broken into pieces. If we didn't do the one component, we could do two stations at one part of the trail, two at another part, that kind of thing. So, that's basically the twelve thousand increase with the fitness equipment.
The material we have, I think, shows two options, right?
Right, one's nine thousand and the other one's more. So, we're trying to look for one middle of the road.
And so, you would say that that fitness equipment add really is the driver for?
Force of the increase.
Everything else is just kind of within the.
Within what we usually do, like, like, the middle school baseball field is what we have targeted for the major improvement this coming summer with this money to try to get it so it's not a flood. So, so, so that's where we're, you know, so, but it all depends on how much money I get in there, how many of these things I can do, right? So, and that was the twelve thousand you took out last.
Does the middle school baseball field flood?
Oh.
I thought it was a pond that drained.
It could, it could be an ice video, it could be. There's no water on it right now. You could probably play on it right now. Okay, and then the last one is, um, Rachel, will you go to that nice cute little guy that was on there before? So, the, the last one is these programs, and there's my cute little guy. He's from our preschool program.
So cute.
That we have, um, in our, in our account three sixteen. Um, our basketball program, which is, this is, um, part of our camp trips that we do. Um, that's at, is that at?
Club getaway.
Club getaway, so, those are things. The other programs that we run are flag football. We also have gotten off the ground, uh, fitness classes for adults. We have gotten yoga. Um, it also does our firecracker and our teen center is in there. And if anyone has known, the teen center received, um, in two thousand nineteen, they received the best PSA and the best advocacy for tobacco-free leadership programs across in the state. So, um, and they also raised four thousand dollars for the Michael J. Fox Foundation. So, um, the, for, with the teen center. Um, also, in this account, it covers the staff for anything that happens on the front lawn. The staff that has to be here to supervise the building, make sure the bathrooms are clean, pick up the garbage when the food truck Friday's here, um, the carnival, the Scotty Fun, Earth Day, anything that's happening on the front lawn, we provide staff. Um, some of the things we do get a rental fee for, for the use of it, some we do not when they're town-related, so.
Do we get any thing from the food trucks?
That's a, that's a, uh, selectmen's, uh, uh, activity, so no.
No, that's, that's a pass through.
They, it's a separate, yeah.
It just pays for the expenses.
So, um, and, and that basically has gone up because the staff that we have, again, minimum wage is gonna be affecting that as well as our before care. We're gonna have to provide, um, additional supplies for that. Um, and any of our, uh, basketball referees, any of that staff is all gonna be affected by the minimum wage. So, um.
That's one of the reasons we went up and, you know, we're talking about going up in the fees to cover the, kind of, the way steps.
But, just to let you know, I, did you get the income?
Yeah.
So, that's like, that's our estimated of six hundred and eleven. Last year, we took in that much. So, this year, we're hoping for more. Um, but we always don't want to estimate too high when we do the estimate. And it also, it figures out to be forty percent of my budget. So, forty percent of my budget is covered by income. So, I'm not quite halfway there, but.
Could you, the, I'm sorry, the, uh, the income sheet that, that we just copied, could you be sure to get that to Bob and Brett so they can upload it into the system?
Sure.
Cause that, they had it in there last year and it's not there now.
Okay.
They can have it on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
There are times I can't remember what I ate for breakfast, but sometimes numbers stick in my head.
Right.
You had mentioned that you were forty-five thousand dollars ahead already this year.
Same time last.
Yes, yeah.
So, the six eleven sounds like it's really conservative.
Cause typically, end of June, uh, end of the fiscal year, that's, we bring in all the money for the summer programs, all the kids and all that. So, June is typically a, a pretty good month.
High revenue month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I can revisit it and look and see, but we try to do like, that's what we took in la- at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Of June two thousand nineteen. So, I, I kind of use that for this year, just because you just don't know.
Sure.
Um, but I figured, you know, I mean, I can revisit it and see if we want to go up income-wise, but, which could almost be, you know, not quite half, but close.
That would be very helpful to us, right?
Okay.
I, I think what we tried to do last year is get the message out that the mill rate is a calculation of revenue less expenses.
Okay.
A lot of the increases, I shouldn't say a lot, several of the increases that we're seeing in the requests for expenses are supposed to be driving more revenue, right?
Okay.
Folks have come to us to say, we want twenty thousand dollars more for this contracted services, and it's going to generate that or more in additional revenues. So, we're trying to get a better handle on what will be the return, effectively the return on investment. So, to the extent that folks are asking for contracted services and it will generate further revenue, we're really trying to put a finer point to it this year or so.
So, so what I get to them will be the updated income.
Income, if income goes up by the amount of the expense going up, then that shouldn't have any impact on the.
Okay, so I will, okay.
So, for, for example, the theater program is, is an expensive program, but it pays for itself.
Actually, I think it even actually generates more, cause they push for ads, they push for sponsorships and, and everything. And it's a great program. It is probably one of the best programs that we have right now that is very successful. I mean, we have fifty kids downstairs in the cafeteria getting ready for Frozen.
Well, and whether, whether you all like it or not, we hold you all out as kind of like the gold standard, the fact that your programs do generate a lot of revenue. So, i- if you can kind of set the pace on putting a fine point to the numbers.
Okay.
And then we can then kind of use that to gain momentum in all the departments.
Okay.
Right.
Eileen, um, or Pat, what is self-sustaining? It's, it's.
A supervisor.
Twenty thousand and then?
It's, it's our program coordinator position. Should probably change the name, cause it's like income that we make sure we make, so it covers her.
Got it.
Her salary.
What's a wiffle ball league?
We tried, we tried, do a high school wiffle ball league at Crow. It didn't get off the ground last year, but I'm hoping this year we get it off.
At?
At Crow.
At a crow.
Crow, because the kids could hit it over the fence there, high school kids.
How do you verify the age?
That sounds fun, yeah.
You gotta verify the age. You wanna do adult one? You wanna do an adult one?
I can't believe you didn't have hordes of kids down there doing.
You know what, it's, it, we probably should try it in July, cause it's when it's baseball season, it's hard.
Yeah.
So, and that, or in August, when travel season.
Have dodgeball next.
Then we could do that too, yeah.
Yeah, so we mentioned it, uh, we talked about, uh, uh, disc golf, which is very expensive.
Expensive or inexpensive?
Inexpensive.
Oh, really, okay.
So, we're, I've talked to the gym teacher at the high school to try to get that working, so.
Good presentation, thank you.
Well, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys. Sorry, I took too long.
No, no, all right, you're in good shape. We're only, we're only fifteen minutes. That's better, that's the best we've done so far.
Right, when it, and we know it's done.
Stop there. Five days.
Yeah, how did you recover?
Is it?
We can't.
Is it, um?
This is all the soil.
Setting. I know.
You okay?
Hold now.
What can I help you with?
No, that's fine, okay. Yes. Oh, sorry.
Take care of that, uh, permission.
Oh, my gosh.
It's not a lot, we should probably supply the, the, the.
You're the bad guy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's called.
Well, really, no. You know, the. I don't know if Terry, do you have a stand for this press? I would just follow along with the.
How does that, how does it track?
That's just, that's just something I give the public when they come to different types of events. Or, you don't have, you didn't have to. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's just what we give the public when they, when they come. You know, we have the public theory in the different events. I, we do it every year. So. But you should have received the updated budget sheets. Right, cause we have some. Whatever we have on our.
We only have a dollar.
That's like at home.
Well, no, we have a whole. You should have the whole. You should have the whole. Thank you. I, I said.
Christine, it's, it's loaded in, in the supporting documents, like, I opened up and, uh, the details and all the.
Matt confirmed they're all moving.
Dr. Carver, there's just a lot of them there, and this is slow, so it's just a lot of toggling.
We just wanted to have this, that's pretty. So, wait, 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 just so we know, the, um, I'm here. Let's get, let's get. We don't know it, that's why we're trying to. We don't know what you see. You should have literally everything that the board event.
Just in the PDF.
Right, right, yeah. So, which one, though? We will not be going through those tonight. Um, we're gonna be talking more globally about the budget, uh, and then at the end, go through some of the different lines and then give you an opportunity to ask questions. You know, the updated ones went to everyone about ten days. Right, so you should have the updated ones from my proposal to the board's proposal.
Let me, let me just verify real quickly. Um, Bob, so all of, uh, Dr. Carver's materials are in the PDFs and the proposed, proposal details, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The newest and greatest, right?
Right, but there are purposes here. We're just gonna rely on this. You're gonna tell us about it and then we'll have this backup information.
Right. You have, I think this is.
Okay, all right, all right, ready, ready to roll? Um, I'd like to welcome, uh, Chairwoman O'Brien and Superintendent Carver and Assistant Superintendent Brooks, and Mrs. Yansky, Business Manager, Director of Business Services, I think it is. I don't know, you change your fiscal services.
School Business Official.
And President of the organization, right?
Yes.
Yes, so, thank you for being here. Floor is yours.
Okay, and thank you very much, um, Mr. Nick Karbaka, Mr. Manfreda, for, um, for embellishing us this evening. We're happy to be able to explain to you, um, the reason for our budget increase, so I know you all, the luck to you.
Just a bit.
Just a bit. I know, I know. So, um, clearly, we're here to present the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education Post-Education Budget.
Dave, can you collect for me?
Let me know if I'm not speaking up loud enough. So we start with this. It all starts with this. What are we here for? Why are we here for in the Bethel School District? And, um, another great slide for clarity purposes. Okay, yes, it is, good, good. Um, so our mission, um, in partnership with the community and families, uh, is really to foster a culture of excellence and achievement. And, and the key here, and what we wanna drive home to, is, um, we provide these opportunities for all students and all of our graduate graduates. We aim to have the competent graduates, resilient, perseverant, passionate, self-driven learners, critical thinkers, college or career-ready, uh, and globally competitive. So this is what we were about in Bethel, and this is our mission. And also, that it applies to all children. So all children, not just the easy ones to educate, but all children. When they are, enroll in our schools, they are our children. The children that lag behind in reading or math, the children with language barriers to learning, the children with special education needs, with behavioral problems, social and emotional difficulties, the children in poverty with their own unique challenges. These are our children when they enroll in our schools. And this presentation is a story of our district. And again, we are here to improve student achievement for all children. And our budget aligns with our strategic plan. We have certain goals, board goals and, and strategic plan, and it's really very student-centered. Students and the ability of all students to learn is our centerpiece, and we believe we can improve achievement for all children. So we, we start out with a budget that aligns to our strategic plan, uh, maintains our extracurricular programs, current and extracurricular programs, supports appropriate class size, especially for elementary children, and provides interventions, and we will talk more about interventions. And also, we seek to maximize resources, um, wherever possible, and we're gonna talk more about that. So to understand our budget and the district's needs, we're going to delve into enrollment trends, demographic breakdown, bubble classes, and staffing. So I'm gonna lead us into, I, I think what's gonna be the story of the evening. Um, and this is gonna be a very different budget presentation than we've had in the past. We're just gonna kinda dive into what, what our current challenges are and what our needs are as a school district. I used the scenario with the Board of Ed that, um, it, it may sound dramatic, but there were, we're at really a crossroads in our community, and a lot of it has to do with the enrollment. Um, I'll, I think most of you who, uh, were certainly on the Board of Finance or a select in the Board of Ed know that when we built Rockwell and Johnson, we, we did, uh, not one, but we did two projected enrollment studies. And every year, when we come before both of the boards, we've talked specifically about, there's been a slight uptick. There's been a slight uptick of kids. There's fifty kids, there's a hundred kids that have increased year by year. And, uh, and again, not to sound too dramatic, but we said, we're really at a tipping point, um, and we really feel that, where we have to make a decision as a community, what we're willing to tolerate in terms of the quality of educational services that this district, uh, supported by the Board of Ed, has been able to deliver to our students. Um, just to provide some context around our enrollment, when we had the second study done in two thousand sixteen uh, for the Rockwell Johnson, we have two hundred and two more students than were projected originally. We have not been as high since two thousand and seven, right, Terry?
Yes.
Uh, in, in terms of the total number of students. And, uh, and it seems like almost on a day-to-day basis, and I'm gonna show you some data, it increases. Um, I keep pointing, Dave, could you just help me here? And to provide, I, I feel like I gotta stand up, cause I have my back to all you. But, um, since the school year has actually started, we've had a hundred and twenty-nine students register for school. And you say, well, why is that important in terms of the overall population? Well, there's a predictability factor, and we used to kind of know what our young old population of students was when the school year started, and we could predict the needs of the students over the course of the year, and it was fairly stable. Um, and I know you're gonna ask me, well, why has that changed? I think two things. I think the building, um, well, I actually see three things. I think the building going on in the community has definitely been a factor. I think the second factor is, there are a lot of young families that are moving to Bethel because they, they have heard about the schools, they love the community, they love the town, the restaurants, the walkability, this kind of small-town feel. Um, and the third thing is, um, renters that have come in and out, so that causes a more transient population. Typically, the majority of kids that we're getting after the school year starts represents a more, um, challenging demographic. They're more your renters that are coming in and out, um, those kinds of things. But the idea is, the predictability and like who we're serving changes almost on a day-to-day basis. Thank you, Dave. Uh, this is not a surprise. I talked about this before. Our free and reduced population, lunch population, we'll talk about the impact about that later in the slides, has increased from nineteen percent to thirty percent. Part of that is because of the change in the state and how they actually qualify in the direct certification of students. But, but there also is an increase in need, and if you look at the free versus the reduced population, um, it's, it's significant. It's a significant impact, uh, to the, the academics that we need to provide to our students. So I'm gonna flip, Dave, thank you, to our next slide. We've also had, we've had a little more stability with our increase of, uh, students with disabilities in the last couple of years. But you're gonna note that from two thousand and fifteen to, to two thousand and nineteen, we have eighty-one more students with disabilities in our district. Now, the good news is, is that we've been able to establish, and a lot of communities, you see overages in special ed, tuition overruns, it's happening in Brookfield, a lot of our surrounding districts. We've been able to manage that by creating programs in our district that I think are higher quality, um, but also meet the needs of our students internally, so we're not facing a lot of outplacements, which I've shared in the past, can be up to two hundred thousand dollars a child to, to outplace. Um, so our staff has done a phenomenal job, rising to the occasion, and again, creating quality programs, and meeting the needs with almost minimal changes in resources for that. And it's a stress, and it's putting a lot of strain on our staff in order to continue to meet those needs. Um, in addition, our English learner population has increased. That's, it's stabilized a little bit, but it's doubled since I started in two thousand and fourteen, um, from three point seven percent to six point eight percent. And again, there's an academic impact to that, which we'll talk about in a minute. Uh, but you might be asking, well, how, what does that mean? So if you flip to the next slide, Dave, I know this graphic is a little hard to read, but it gives you an overview of how a student, um, is provided English services, um, for, uh, how they're identified as an English language learner. Uh, and, um, from the time that they enter with a home language survey, then they're formalized, formally assessed. Um, and if they meet certain criteria, um, with an English language proficiency exam, um, we are required to provide certain services and programs to those students. Last year, we came to you. Um, the real guideline at the state of Connecticut level is that if you have twenty of more than one language in a school, you have to have a bilingual program in that school. Right now, um, the high school, where is it, Rockwell? And Barry?
Barry, next year will be.
Barry will, will meet the criteria. So we have the staff, because we've had to add them in previous years. But, um, and we did not meet the criteria for Johnson or the middle school, but I will tell you, probably within the next year or two, we will have to, we'll have to add, uh, a bilingual program and certified staff to those schools. Um, uh, but they base it on October one data, and so we, we don't have to do it now. But I think it's coming to a theater near you pretty soon. So if you go to the next slide, um, so how many languages are spoken? We have thirty-five different languages represented in the Bethel Public Schools.
Really?
Yes, thirty-five, the most pred-, if you, most predominantly, and twenty-five, um, so, so of the thirty-five, the, for the students, uh, who are identified as, uh, English language learners, um, or English learners, I should say, the state keeps changing the designation for them. We have twenty-nine different languages that we're serving, and then the, uh, which is a total of thirty-six and a total between those two groups. And with Spanish and Portuguese being our most highly spoken, uh, second languages for our English learners. And they kinda go neck and neck. So for example, I believe the high school is Portuguese this year, um, but it could be Spanish next, um, because they're, they're, they're very, very close in terms of the overall percentages are. So I just wanna provide context. We are providing, um, and, and I've said this before, that when, um, we, we used to get a lot of our English learners in elementary school, and we actually have incredible success in terms of, um, remediating their skills and closing the gaps. Um, but what we're seeing now is we're getting them up through high school. And, um, in, in some cases, um, they, they, they haven't gotten a, a, a solid education in their country of origin. So not only are we dealing with language proficiency, but we're also dealing with language gaps. And, um, and our teachers have to compensate for that in the classroom, because essentially, we have an immersion program with ESL support, English as a Second Language Support. Um, and, and we have, uh, we do have, have English language classes that we've started at the high school. But we've had to develop programs really in the last couple of years to kind of meet the needs within our given resources, so. So what is the impact on, on all this? So why is this, why is this an issue? And, uh, I'm gonna roll. Okay, uh, so there is a particular impact, uh, in, in certain of our subgroups. So in particular, children in poverty and English language learners, um, have difficulty reading, uh, reading comprehension and overall vocabulary, and it's pretty basic. You have to learn to read to ha- take part in other academic classes, so you can't solve the math problem unless you learn to read. So that is, is a problem. We've gotta establish that baseline. So, um, these children in particular have, uh, particular challenges in that area. And as Dr. Carver was saying, based on their immediate experiences and maybe interruption in other, uh, education in their languages, uh, rather countries they came from, they are in a disadvantage, and they're gonna need special, uh, special attention. And, um, and I think that the, the only thing I would add is that, um, it, it has a significant impact, because they may be able to have conversational, especially our English language learners. They have great social skills, and it appears as if that they have good English, uh, good English language acquisition. But the level of, uh, complexity around the vocabulary, especially when you get into content area, we call them tier three words, is, is so intense that they require a lot of additional supports, um, to make them successful. So, that's a little bit about the context. And, and then, um, we wanna go now into the area of per pupil expenditures, um, see how we're measuring up with our surrounding towns in terms of what we, um, what the cost per pupil is. And also, something called an accountability index, um, and how we measure with other towns insofar as, um, certain ratings indexes. Thanks. So, I know this is a little hard to read, and you will get a copy of this, um, but per pupil expenditures are calculated by the state. And they're calculated, and I have the references at the bottom of the sheet. They're calculated to include not only, um, uh, what's based off our EDO one, which you get a copy of. It's a state report that we file with the, um, uh, the.
With the, with the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Office of Policy and Management. And, um, and this is our DURG, our District Reference Group. So this is a slide that shows what our spending per pupil is compared to other districts that have similar demographics as ours. And you can see, um, and I wanna point out that the state number, which is a little over sixteen thousand, um, is actually from sixteen seventeen, um, they didn't have updated number. Their state's always a year or two behind in the calculations of this. Um, but you can see that Bethel, um, compared to our DURG, spends significantly less, not only than the state, but also the DURG. In contrast to that, on the accountability index, um, with the state, so Bethel's orange again. So, um, and those are twelve factors that are, uh, included, um, in, in fact, they just had in the paper recently. Um, and our, and our, um, and our index did go down a little bit. We're at eighty-two point four, and we're at eighty-one point nine now. But you can see, even though our spending's on the low side, um, our achievement overall is, is on the high side. And we've been able to, to, um, do that with limited resources, but we're, as I, I keep saying, we're kinda at a, we're, we're not kind of, we are at a tipping point in terms of predicting that. Um, if you go to the Fairfield County, because here's the reality, we live in Fairfield County. We compete with other districts in terms of teacher salaries, uh, benefits. We have an increased benefit cost because we live in Fairfield County. Um, uh, so if you compare us to Fairfield County, um, you have a range from, uh, region. And I didn't even put in here Wilton, Weston, and Keenan, because if they were here, they would even be higher.
But they're not in our DURG, right?
Yeah, but my point here is that we live in Fairfield County.
Oh, I see, so, yeah.
So, um, so there, it's a significant difference, um, but yet, when you look at the achievement, next slide, we remain competitive, um, and we have remained competitive. Um, and I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm a little worried that with the, with the limited resources and people being stretched more and more and more, that we ca- we're not gonna be able to continue to maintain the pace with the increased needs in the demographics. So all of those factors are kind of coming together into like this perfect storm, which is, uh, part of why the budget is the way it is. Um, so if you go to the next slide, Dave, thank you. Um, when you look at, and I talked about in two thousand and seven, um, what was the comparable staff ratio? We had about thirty, uh, we had about four hundred and eleven total staff members. Um, and over time, because of the recession and because we lost enrollment, staff should have gone down, and it did. And we, we have added so, a couple of positions over the year, but here's the reality. We have twelve less positions with now more staff, uh, more children. And more challenging needs, and more challenging needs, and more challenging needs. So that combination of the, those two things. So, um, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not even a fair comparison, looking at the twelve less physician, because the needs are greater, and that's, and that's a significant change over time. So, thank you, Dave. So we're just gonna jump into what we put into this budget, and why we feel that it's critical um, to, uh, for, for some of the additional headcount, and to talk about why, and what's the data to support why we think we need that. So the first is, um, at Johnson School currently, and I'll show you the demographic trend over time. We've had, and I've talked about it for a couple of years, we've had some bubble classes that range from like two hundred and eighty students to a smaller classes that are two hundred students, but they're ranging more in the two thirty, two fifty. Right now, at Johnson School, the average class size is about twenty-seven students. And i- in our opinion, it is just too high. We can't individualize to meet the students' needs. We have more social, emotional, uh, behavioral issues, which we're gonna get into in a minute, um, that teachers and administrators are dealing with, and it's being, it's becoming harder and harder to individualize for students. Uh, we believe that if we were to add one more section in both fourth and fifth grade, it would bring that class size down to twenty-three and twenty-four, w- w- roughly, which is a more appropriate pa- class size, um, than, um, than certainly what's there now. And it's still high for our region in terms of class sizes. And, uh, so if you look at it now, it, that represents the average class size. Um, uh, so the, if you, if I draw your attention to the red dot, we have nine sections. It would bring it to ten sections in fourth and fifth grade. Um, and it would have, um, and that would, those numbers would come down to the twenty-three and twenty-four. But I did put our enrollment, just to show you, even since, uh, October first, when the account was taken, we had three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine students. When I look today, we had two thou- three thousand one hundred and seventy-nine students.
Forty more.
Right, and that's just in two months, or three months, I'm calling that one's off. Right, so I just wanted to give you a sense of how quickly these, how quickly that we're getting kids, the enrollment's coming. All right?
I'm sorry, Dr. Carver, just to parse a little bit, you, you mentioned one more position per grade.
Two, a total of two.
A total of two, cause they're fourth and fifth.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that is reflected in the overall salary increase lines that you see, okay?
So, but, so.
Yep.
To go back.
Go back.
Those are absolutely bubble classes, right?
So if you look, you might have to stand up.
What happened?
So our biggest bubbles are in seventh and eighth grade, uh, no, sixth and seventh grade, so you. So, you see, currently, seventh grade is two hundred and eighty-five students. And behind it is two thousand and seventy. Right after that, you're going to see some drops. And so, it should level out after a couple of years and we should see a decrease or more of a stability as long as there's not more people moving in, right? That's the only wild card that we don't know. But that's the big difference.
The wild card here to me is you're projecting increases. What is your projection for the, this next coming fiscal year in terms of total students? Because right now, you're at thirty-one seventy-nine. What are you projecting for?
I think we're going to be close to that.
Pardon me?
I think we'll be close to that, if not get a few more. On average, we've gotten, if you look at the projected enrollment over time, which you have in appendix, one of your appendix.
One of them?
You have one. We've been getting about fifty, sixty kids a year.
Fifty, sixty more?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're approaching the nineteen, I'm sorry, yeah, nineteen eighty-three all-time high then.
Which was thirty-two hundred? Is that what it was?
Thirty-four, I think.
Okay.
He's back in the eighties.
Oh. Okay. But you have it. I mean, if you just look at the past five years or six years since I've been here, we've been getting about fifty or sixty kids a year. And, and so, we're starting to see a slowly increase over time. And like I said, even just in the last few months. Now, there, the building will slow down, right? That will, that will stop. But I also think that there are just young families that want to be here because they like, they like schools.
There's some high levels coming through, in other words.
And it's affordable. That's the other thing I, I think I've shared this with you, but I have a new picnic every year. The PTO's wonderfully sponsor a picnic for us every year. Mrs. Legner and Mr. Trudy and I greet new families. And we ask them, why did you move here? And they say, to schools. We love the town and the taxes are cheaper. Nobody wants to get into that. A lot of people coming from New York.
They're all New York plates.
A lot of people coming from New York. So, when we, when we meet with them, a lot of people are coming from New York. So, if you go to the next slide, Dave.
So, can I ask a question? So, you've got fourth and fifth grades encapsulated there, like that's where you would put staff. But those grades are moving to the middle school soon, right?
Right.
So, where do you actually add staff?
So, I would add it in fourth and fifth grade. And we would have to keep them there at least another year. It depends on how the enrollment has, settles out over time. Last year, we added staff to the middle school to deal with those huge classes. So, I think, I think we talked last year about the split clusters and how each, each grade level has a cluster and now we have a split cluster. And so, we have some of our staff that are teaching both sixth and seventh grade right now. And next year, they'll be teaching seventh and eighth grade. So, we reallocate wherever we can and our staff are wonderful about that. But we had to bring in staff last year. Part of it was just reallocation of people. But now, now we're just, what we're doing is robbing Peter to pay the mortgage.
You know, I understand. I guess my question is, when we hire for those fourth and fifth grades, we should make sure we have teachers who can transition with that, with bubble classes.
Right, right. And we look at that all the time.
I know you do, I'm just.
Yeah. And even to the high school eventually.
Yes.
Because that eighth grade class, when they hit the high school, will put us straight on the high school. So, we have, and we have been hiring for certification so that if we have to make any changes long-term, we can make those shifts.
So, it might cost more to get someone who is capable of teaching, of moving with the students, I guess.
Right. But we have flexibility in sixth grade with certification. So, it's seventh and eighth where everything, you have to be content area certified. So, we feel that by leveraging that, we've frequently moved teachers from Johnson to the middle school and back, just based on needs. So.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Do you see a trend in like when you see the student enrollment increases? Is there a trend like grade-wise where you're seeing more?
No, if you go back, if you go back like.
I'm just curious.
It's a hundred and twenty-nine students. Keep going back, Dave. If you look at it, it's all the grades. Keep going back.
So, it's across the, across the spectrum?
Yeah, keep going. Back, back, back. One more. One more. One more.
No, we have one more.
It's way back there. But you'll.
I was just curious, you know, I mean, it seems like, oh, we increased fifth, sixth, seventh grade or.
Yeah. No, and I can tell you, you'll get the slides. So, in, at Berry School, there was twenty students, I'm sorry, at the high school, there were twenty new students. At the middle school, there were twenty-four, fifteen. At Johnson, twenty-three. At Rockwell, and forty-seven are at Berry. Part of the Berry increases do the circle. Because we get kids all year long because of their disabilities. So, that's why you see somewhat of an increase at Berry. So, if you go to the next one, yeah. So, I also want to point out that we really have tried to reallocate staff also. You know that we're making the shift to adding third grade to Johnson School. And, and to do that shift, we really don't need to change any staff. We are going to be sharing our specials teachers between Rockwell and Johnson School so that we don't, we can do, we have figured out a way that we can do that. And at Berry School, it gives an opportunity for our preschools to have more opportunities for specials. So, we're, we're trying to maximize on that. And we're also going to redistribute all our special ed teachers, our speech and language pathologies, all our specialized programs, so that all of the schools are covered in terms of meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. So, although we're asking for children or staff members, we're also seriously looking at the, at the staff that we have and where we can best utilize them to fit needs. So.
Sure, all right. So, we clearly believe there's a need for more math interventionists. We have been looking at the data and while we're pretty much where we want to be, we really have a concern with, with math. And we do find, based on our data, that the earlier we get to children and we find what their needs are and can address them, the better they are to learn and to go on and maybe not need intervention any longer. But, but we find that this is a big deficit in our, in our system right now.
Right. And to add to that, so Dave, if you click a couple more, you know, if you look at state and liter, state and local trends, we pretty much bury the state. When you compare our mathematics scores in our district reference groups and across the state, we do perform pretty well. And, but there's, there's a big gap in achievement in the state of Connecticut between mathematics and literacy. And what we're finding in Bethel is also reflective of that. We have done a lot over the past couple of years to add math intervention to the district. There was no, there was no certified teachers that were math interventionists when I started in Bethel. Through reallocation and through finding different staff members, we've been able to add a math interventionist to the districts and we've had some success in it. But the reality is, is that math as we were taught it is very different than math today. It's very rigorous. And, and in our current staffing levels are, we almost have a double the amount of literacy staff to provide intervention than we do for math. If you could click, Dave, thank you. And so, we currently have, and this is part of the, we currently have three hundred and ninety-three students, K-12, that would qualify to get math intervention who we can't serve with our existing staff. So, it's fifty-seven percent of the kids who would qualify. And so, you might say, well, how do you qualify? You qualify based on assessments that we give all of our students. And then, and then if you meet certain benchmarks under the sixty-first or the fortieth?
Fortieth.
Four-fortieth percentile, then we give additional assessments to really determine if there's a mathematical deficit. And from there, we will assign interventions for the student based on needs. What we've been doing is really taking our most needy students and providing them intervention to the most needy students. And because, and we've been relying on classroom teachers to try to provide interventions to what we call tier two, our, our students who don't have as big of a gap but still need some type of, type of support. So, if you click, this is just to show you that in literacy, and I'm going to just put you to the bottom line, we're, we're able to meet about seventy-four percent of our, of our students in the area of literacy based on the current staffing who qualifies for intervention. If you compare that to mathematics and the different grade levels, I have already said this, we have fifty-seven percent of our students who would meet the criteria, who do not receive intervention currently. And so, that's a significant portion of the population.
I'm sorry, just to break those numbers down, fifty-seven percent qualify.
Right.
But don't get intervention.
Because of your staff?
What's?
Yes, yes.
Then what's the percentage of those who do get intervention?
Of fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
I'm not doing, I may need intervention because when I add.
Fifty-seven of our grade. Right, for students who qualify.
Hundred percent qualify.
It's a subset.
No, I, right, what's the total subset?
Seven hundred and one students, three hundred and eight receive intervention, three hundred and ninety-three do not currently receive intervention.
And the seven oh one is the subset of the thirty, or almost three thousand?
Total going to meet the criteria. Yes, right, right. That's a rumor. Yes.
So, if I, if memory serves, so a couple of years ago, we, this is when you launched the math intervention.
Right.
Because the scores were down compared to, you know, English and, or, you know, the regular literacy.
Yeah.
So, I thought at that time that, that you did have, that you did take, reallocate staff and then did you not have higher?
We did.
Was it one or two, one?
We reallocated to our grade.
Right.
Right.
So, the question is, since you've been doing this for a couple of years, is, do you see, what is the increase in proficiency from when you started it to now? And I'm not talking about the people, the kids not served, I'm just like trying to see what that delta is.
It's a great question. And we, we, I actually took it out because we thought it was too much data. But I would be happy to provide that to you because.
I would love to see it.
Yep, there's, there's two pieces of data that I'll provide for you. The first is, we actually track the number of students that are meeting their, their intervention goals. And the percentage, the kids that get the proficient, that reach their, their personal goals in terms of intervention is a very high percentage is when they get the support of the interventionist. And they also get it at, if it's done at a younger level, the percentage is obviously higher because they have less gaps to remediate, right? So, and I know I've shown in previous presentations that when you look at our state data, which is referred to as S-Back, our growth data at our lowest levels is significantly higher than the, what we call level two or the next level up. So, we know it works. And then our overall proficiency in math has increased. So, I can definitely get that.
Yeah, it's just really interesting.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
What happens to the three hundred and ninety-three students that don't get?
So, they get the teachers.
The teachers.
And is that enough?
No.
Hence why we're asking for three up. Right. It's not. Hence why we're asking for the three.
That's weird.
It is not enough. And plus, there's no way, especially at Johnson, because they have big classes anyways. We do have a block in all three elementary schools, both win. It means whatever I need.
What I need.
What I need. And the classroom teachers. I bet you don't know what it is. The classroom teachers oftentimes provide the support for that in the classroom. But it's not, it's not as systemic and sustained research-based intervention that you would get from somebody who's a certified interventionist. So.
So, so, so you take these three hundred and what's, students? And are they just, how long has this been, since the past two years?
Well, it's because our population's increasing.
I understand that.
And we're getting more challenging students.
Okay, so in the meantime, like for instance, the, you know, the budget request and whatever, is there no way, I'm just talking.
Yeah.
That you, you know, like in a military way, that you can, you know, get certain teachers to have some sort of resources to train them in a certain way that, like almost military, that you could, you know, dive in and.
And we do.
Stem the bleeding.
We do. But, but I think it goes back to what we said before, we've, we've reallocated in a lot of different ways.
Right.
It's actually a personal strength of mine. And there's just, it's just, it's, we're at a point where we can't sustain it. It's just an impossible task to ask the classroom teachers.
If the three are higher, this isn't like a voluntary intervention, right?
No.
It's basically telling the student, look, we're going to provide you this.
So, what happens is.
You need to.
Yeah. We have a, we have teams at each school, they're called SRVI teams, Scientific Research Based Intervention. And they work with families. They, based on their assessment data, they develop goals, they develop ways that they're going to track the progress of the student. And the good news is, we're able to cycle kids in and out of interventions based on their success and whatever skill they're trying to develop. And so, we, we send the parents a letter, they're placed in intervention, and they're provided regular monitoring throughout the period of time that they're in intervention. Some students who continue to have academic difficulties might actually go, make, have a referral made to special ed. So, they might actually go into the special ed route if the academic interventions don't work. So, actually, from a fiscal perspective, avoiding special ed, which is much more expensive, and providing interventions at an early level is much more effective than, than the other way around.
How many of these interventionists do you have right now?
We have four. And then at the high, right, we have four. And at the high school, we do have some mathematics teachers that are teaching intervention blocks. And, and also, we have an SAT math class. That's all. In English, that's a providing.
So, four serving the three oh eight, and you want three more for the three ninety-three?
Right. And it's probably not going to cover all. But it's, it would get us much closer.
What, what percentage do you expect to cover with additional three?
Well, I mean, if we're, if, I would hope, I hope three hundred. Yeah, three hundred. So.
So, Dr. Carver, what, so are there state and new requirements once a child's identified to get some intervention?
So, the, the.
What are the laws covering?
The state guidelines, there's something called, but they're guidelines, they're, and it's also requirement for a referral to special ed. So, you, so the state doesn't mandate that you have them, but you really shouldn't be making a referral to special education unless you've proven that there's some type of intervention that's occurred. And I'm talking more about your learning disabilities, I'm not talking about some of your mental health issues and things like that, or autism, or intellectual disabilities or things like that. So, there's a requirement that you, that you have a period of time where you have tried the intervention to see whether or not it's successful before you make that referral to special ed. So, there is indirectly.
So, and I don't think you've covered this yet, but has there been an increase in special ed? Because I think it is, because I've looked online for state data and whatnot, and it seems like the special ed is increasing.
The state is. I actually took that slide out too because we had so much information I thought was going to overwhelm.
You, you had it up, it went up two.
Yeah. It went up to children, but our percentage compared to the state percentage is a little bit less.
No, but even, it's broken down by town.
Right.
And so, like it hasn't, the delta is Bethel two thousand eight to Bethel two thousand eighteen.
Right.
And it's, it shows it up.
And the, if the statewide trend is, is going up, I think Bethel's probably, it's about fifteen percent.
Yeah, it's about fifteen.
Right.
It's going up every year.
And we're about thirteen percent overall.
What's the cost per, like interventionist, like what's their?
So, interventionists are usually more experienced teachers? Terry, what did you budget for that?
I think we budgeted, was it Masters, like Masters seven or something like that? Or sixty, sixty or seven. So, it was around seventy, I can find that.
I mean, it's seventy thousand off where.
Yeah, plus benefits.
Right.
Per interventionist.
Right, benefits.
Yes. Because it's a very experienced teacher.
It is.
Right.
And then elementary school teachers, what did they, classroom teachers?
We budgeted that less because they, you, you, you can, you can tend to get, uh, people right out of school.
So like sixty thousand?
Younger people.
No, it's like fifty, sixty.
Yeah. It'd be around fifty-five, sixty, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So these would be full-time positions.
Right.
Teaching position.
Teaching position.
And that's excluding benefits, the fifty-five and seventy excluded.
Yes, and benefits for two-person, it would run about twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand.
Cost of the board. I'd go with the two-person, not the single, not the family.
I'm sorry, Terry, twenty-two thousand for two people.
For a two-person. A two-person family.
That's for the elementary school?
I budget that generally for anyone that we're gonna hire, I figured that I go with the middle one, I don't go with the single, and I don't go with the family.
Our younger people tend not to have, they tend to only, the single benefits, our more experienced teachers tend to need family, so that's why we kind of budget.
We usually hire the young, then they get married, then they have babies.
Is that, is that consistent with your current experience?
Yes.
It seems very, it's much lower than in the corporate world.
Intervent benefits?
That's.
Yeah.
Two-person, that's cost of the board.
Correct.
Remember, teachers pay twenty percent.
Of their benefits.
I only budgeted our costs, I don't budget it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we'll switch topic.
The social emotional.
So, um.
Ours?
All ours, yes, so as if all the academic challenges were enough.
Good to know.
We, um, recently had a developmental asset survey done, um, through a grant that the district received, and eighth through twelfth graders were surveyed. And we gave a presentation recently, um, and invited maybe of you who are here, some of you already know we're here anyway. Um, and it, so it shows some sobering data, um, that, um, and that reflects what we'd already seen in the classroom, we've seen behavioral issues younger, in younger kids, anxiety developing in younger kids. But these, these kids in high school, eighth grade through, um, high school, we're talking about, um, you know, depression and suicide and just how they feel about themselves and their self-esteem and. Um, anyway, it was, it was, um, very sobering, and we know that after we met with this group of parents and community leaders, that we, we are gonna try to do something, and we feel we need to do something within this schools, the board has actually also, um, established a special committee to start working on inclusion and civility. Um, and, and just really try to, to do, we can to support the things that are called assets, which, which, which make a child less apt to be prone to maybe drug addiction and risky behaviors if they have some of these assets, um, strength of family and, and community and things like this. Um, where children who don't tend to have these assets are more prone to risk, and more prone to have drug addiction, more prone to these other risky behaviors. So we're learning more about this, what we're seeing in the schools and what we're seeing in our data that Dr. Carver's gonna share with you is there definitely an uptick in this. That, um, that kids are, um, more depressed or have more anxiety, and there's a whole lot of factors contributing to that. And their parents are telling us when we, when we had our session with them, that they are also gonna need some coaching, maybe they're also gonna be looking at the, what do we do about this? Help us with this, what do we do with our kids at home, we don't want to become a statistic, so we feel strongly as educators that, you know, kids are, are feeling, uh, in a nurturing environment where they're content, where they feel safe, they're going to learn better. Um, if they are fearful and, and experiencing those types of feelings, then they're not. So that really leads also into the ability to learn and our success in, in, in achievement. So this is a national trend, the, the statistics that we've seen, and you might have seen other area towns have come out in the paper and talked about their comparable surveys that they've had. So it's a really necessary area that we, that we not ignore, and so this, so getting around to why we need a coach is that we need to teach our teachers what to look for in the classroom and maybe how to help. And so this is, um, to, to hire somebody who does this, who's a quite, um, experienced person, maybe in special ed, and has, um, behavioral background, and can help our teachers and build capacity within our district, um, so, um, and will help develop curriculum and so forth. So that's what, the overview and that Dr. Carver's gonna break it down. Yeah, so I mean, I think that you said it very well. Uh, I think that, and I'm gonna show you some data in a minute, of stuff that we're experiencing on the school, almost on a daily basis, in terms of, uh, crisis intervention that we need to provide our students. And we feel that as a district, we need to really address it systemically, a lot of school districts across the state and across the country are, are developing and implementing what they call social emotional learning curriculums. Um, and, um, they, uh, we know that our beha-, our, 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 just like we have academic interventions for behavior, um, for, uh, math, literacy and mathematics, we need the same levels of interventions for ma-, of our behavior and our, and our mental health issues. And if we don't address it systemically, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to put out crises, you know, we're gonna be reacting to different things that are happening. Um, so that includes, as Ms. O'Brien said, developing curriculum, working with, working on our intervention programs, actually working with teachers who are experiencing challenging behaviors, and how do you best support a child in a classroom, um, that's maybe not a student with a disability, hasn't progressed to that level yet. Um, and really looking at, working with teams to, and our PPS staff, uh, which is our social workers or psychologists and our guidance counselors, to really strengthen, um, the behavioral systems. So what kind of data are we talking about? Um, Melanie referred to, um, the, uh, the survey that we gave. So nine hundred and fifty-four of our students, and this complete survey's online, so if you wanna look at the survey, it's online, it's on our website. Um, so, um, but what was most troubling, I think, in this survey, is that twenty-four percent of our students felt, uh, in grades, it's nine hundred students felt that they felt, uh, depressed or sad most of the time. Ten percent of our students or ninety students said that they attempted suicide at least one time. And, um, and I think that was the most sobering statistic, I think you all know that we had a suicide last summer, of one of our, one of our middle school students. And so to say that this is not real is, is, would really be, uh, underestimating the severity of what we're talking about here. Um, if you, Dave, thank you. Um, we have started to track our crisis intervention, so the way we deal with a, a student who's in imminent harm is that our PPS staff will do a risk assessment with a student, um, to see whether they're in danger of harming themselves or, or others. And we handle it in one of a couple of ways, we can either call two-one-one, which is a crisis care line, and two-one-one will actually come to our school. They will, um, they will do an assessment of the child, um, and determine what further interventions or treatments that a child might need. Um, and the, 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 to, to, to actually do two-one-one, the parent has to agree to, to the services. And, um, so sometimes that's a challenge because parents don't always agree to those types of services. We prefer to call two-one-one because there's better case management of a student that happens outside of school that, that, that a family can get. But you'll note that up until the time we did this, which was actually at least a month ago, we had forty-four calls for two-one-one.
This year.
This year. This is today. And we had thirteen calls to nine-one-one.
I'm sorry, this year academic year or this year calendar?
Yeah. Since September. Since September. Um, so, um, and again, it's just more dated to show that there's, there's significant issues. And our administrators are, are dealing with a lot of this also, in addition to our PPS staff. Um, also, our, our.
I'm sorry, Dr. Carver, I apologize.
No, please.
Prior slide.
Go back.
You got an asterisk next to Rockwell-Johnson and Middle School that contains specialized programs.
Right.
Is that today or with this?
No, they, I wanted to just point out, because you might say, well, why does Barry have not, and Rockwell has more, and Johnson has more, there are specialized programs in the schools for students with behavior. So they, um, that, I think, contributes to part of that number.
So now, you wouldn't put in correlation to the fact that Barry has no special program and zero calls?
No, I would, that's my, my point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, um, Dave, thank you. Um, also, we have to report every year on civil rights and bullying and harassing in Dayton by school, and this goes to what Ms. O'Brien was saying about civility and inclusion. Um, we've also had racial issues, quite frankly, um, where, um, the students have, uh, used derogatory language, hate speech, um, and it's happened on more than one occasion. Uh, if you, and you'll note that it's been, it's generally, the trend is that it's increased over time. Um, Johnson School is high, and I, I'm gonna tell you, I attribute that to sexualized behavior. So kids have access to everything. And they're watching things they shouldn't be watching. And they come to school, as kids do, and they act out some of what they see. And, um, and so I think that's why we're seeing more, uh, more, uh, trends that way also.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I did, I went to the site, I, uh, the school site, because I was looking around, I, we landed on this thing on resources, the Family School Compact for Achievement. So it seems to me, just hearing you talk, that, you know, there's, obviously, there's a, a chasm with the family, is, in, in terms of.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, you have the school culture, and then they go home to, you know, a family that's not necessarily as in- integrated. So is there not, I mean, is there outreach to the families, and I know a lot of them may not be cooperative, but just in terms of this Family School Compact for Achievement must include some kind of.
There are.
Support.
And we, we.
With a kid, no?
And, and, and many families are very cooperative, many families, quite frankly, don't know what to do. Um, and so our, our, our PPS staff, our social workers, our guidance counselors, our psychologists, are constantly, our administrators are constantly reaching out to work with families to provide support. Um, the reason we had the forum, and we're gonna have another forum in March, and we had about a hundred people show up, so that was really positive.
For families that can support the effects.
Families. People in the community came out. Um, we also have, uh, I've, we've also reached out to the faith-based organizations, and that, a lot of the churches came and they brought people, um, to it too, because we believe that it takes a community to solve this problem, we can only solve a portion of the problem, but the impact that we're seeing is much more significant. Um, the other thing that we're seeing, this is a good and bad thing, is we have something called gaggle. What gaggle does in GoGuardian is it screens our students' emails, um, and, um, uh, anything in the Google Suite. Um, so if a student puts on an, an email to, um, uh, that they wanna hurt themselves, or if it's a threat to somebody else, it actually stops the email from going to whoever it was sent to, um, or, and it, it, and depending upon the level of threat, it will actually send an email to our, um, administrators who can, who can actually intervene and stop. So our administrators, including myself, frequently on the weekends, get these emails, and we have to respond immediately, um, to make sure that our kids are safe. So, um, if, if they can't reach us, they'll actually call the police directly, um, if they think that there's some type of, um, harm to self or others, and the police will be dispatched, um, to the house. So in addition to all of the other data, there was, uh, forty-three instances, can you go back one? Forty-three instances of questionable content around suicide and self-harm, um, and then six, uh, possible student situations where they, that they thought something might happen, and our administrators had to react to that. Um, but you can see by the bottom data today, it's kind of outpacing itself. Um, so we anticipate that it probably will be higher, um, based on that.
Um, Dr. Carver, I would just comment that these, this is monitoring only school devices.
Right.
So your personal devices, and if you're smart and you know you're probably having your school device monitored, then there's probably a lot of additional information we can't, we can't gather because we've got no business on their personal devices, but I think this is not truly helping with the problem.
It's probably under-represents the data.
Yes.
So this is just another, uh, GoGuardian, which is another thing that we use, which is a web tool that filters web devices, so any, any, anytime of, of one of our students is on a website that they shouldn't be on, our administrators get emails, and they have to investigate and follow up, whether it's, quite frankly, pornography or self-harm. Um, but you, so the, all of these different sources are constantly coming at us, where we have to react, and we have to do something about it. Hence, we really wanna create a cohesive system to address some of these issues.
I have a quick question, is our, um, school resource officer involved in this?
They're wonderful.
Yes.
Yes.
They're part of the team?
Right. They're, they're, they're just fabulous, I, I can't say enough about the Bethel PD, um, they are, they are wonderful partners, um, and we've been blessed with great resource officers um, that have really supported the schools and all of us.
Dr. Carver, who provides that two-one-one service?
So, um, it's, um.
United Way, well.
Yeah.
Well, more.
Which is a private agency, correct?
It is, well, I, I think it's, it is sort of the statewide United Way kind of program implemented in different, by different groups in different regions, so here it is.
It is well more.
It is well more here, um, and it's, it's called Emergency Mobile Psychiatric Services, so parents can actually access it from their home, as well as.
It is.
We don't pay for it.
You know, we don't pay for it, no, but it's a free service to any parent who has a child in crisis, and he can call the number twenty-four hours a day.
Right.
Service, great.
Right. Great. And, and the, 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 the bad part about calling nine-one-one versus two-one-one also is that two-one-one, like, I think I already said, you, you get more systemic support services if the family is agreeable. You call nine-one-one, typically that's a trip to Danbury Hospital, and you're out within a couple of hours with no services. And, uh, it's just the way the emergency rooms run, Danbury's no different than any other emergency room across the state, but what ends up happening is the child's back on his day without any plan for, for, for types of services or interventions, so. And I always wanna reiterate too, every one of my colleagues around the region is dealing with the same stuff. So Bethel is not unique, and our data's not unique. So it's an, it's a statewide and national trend, um, that is, it, that is very concerning, and hence why we really wanna embrace it.
And, and if, because it is a statewide, nationwide trend, are there schools, districts who are out in front that kinda learn from, kinda use their experience?
So in the region, there's several school districts that have implemented a, a social emotional learning programs, like Ruler is an example of one, that's out of Yale University. It's expensive, um, to implement, uh, it'd actually be cheaper to probably develop our own, um, based on the framework, uh, and have long-term sustainability and provide more support to services. So there are, there are some things that are happening across the state and the country, um, in this area.
Well, be more, sure.
Yes.
Is there anything, since this is statewide, is there anything that the, uh, states, uh, contributes in terms of a grant?
Well, no. Um, CAPS is lobbying, uh, I think you all know, I'm, I'm on the CAPS executive board, and they're lobbying the state to provide money for mental health and mental health services and programs. And I, I, I know that, I'm pretty sure the teachers' unions are too, I looked to Al, but I, I'm pretty sure they are too, because they, because they're seeing the trend statewide. But right now, there's, there has been no, that have increased availability to just.
And there's nothing, uh, on the state legislation?
Not currently, that I'm aware of.
To support that?
Um, the Department of Public Health gave us the Suicide Prevention Grant, so we do have a very, very small grant, a Suicide Prevention Grant, which is finished this year. And we've used that money to train our staff in, um, understanding the risks, um, of, uh, or warning signs of, of, of potential issues. We implemented a Gizmo program at Johnson School to help choo- children identify their feelings and more appropriately manage their feelings. Um, and, and our, our PPS, our staff is just wonderful about providing different programs, but to answer your question, it was a little grant, which is over this year, and it really isn't gonna help sustain any.
So they need legislation.
We do. We would, we would need legislation.
Is there a, an effort by all the local, uh, school boards?
There is.
There is.
There is, it's part of our.
Is there any response from our representatives?
Um, I, I, I believe they understand the issues and they're supportive of that, um, have they committed to anything? No.
Okay.
If you look at our CAPS policy agenda, which is the Connecticut Association of Public Health Services, it's, it's one of the big issues, that we say that needs funding, um, but they have not come forward, and it's certainly something we could invite them in to talk more about.
Oh, I'm just trying to keep up. So, we had large class sizes, our solution was two elementary teachers. We had the math problem with roughly three hundred and sixty students not being served, that required three math interventionists. So what are we doing with the social emotional?
It's one FTE.
And what does an FTE stand for?
Uh, full-time, well, sorry.
Full-time.
Um, and I believe we budgeted it ninety right there.
Yeah.
Because that's a top step person.
Now, is that like, uh, almost like, I don't know what they're called, they were called guidance counselors.
We budgeted a counselor.
Right.
He, 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 he was a strong behavioral background, so it could be a social worker, it could be a school psychologist, it could be a spe- a, a, a challenged special ed teacher who has great behavior background, or, I'm missing one, psychologist? Subtle counselor.
And just so I understand, you guys, based on these nine-one-one calls or two-one-one calls or DCF referrals, you identify the group of students that need intervention, and this FTE becomes involved at that point?
Well, I would actually take a step backwards.
All right, well, just explain.
Yeah, this person would help develop and implement a social emotional curriculum that we would implement pre-K twelve.
So it would be a train-to-trainer type person?
Right, so they would take the current research and the framework around what makes a good program, um, train teachers, work with our staff, um, but also be there to problem-solve, so if somebody is experiencing difficulty, that they'd be available to them.
Got it, thank you.
Budgeted salary of ninety-two or seventy-seven.
And this would be a full-time person?
Right.
It's not a, not, uh, someone that you would just bring in for the one year to set up the program?
No. It would, it would have to be somebody that would have to be sustained over time. So. So over, I'm just blessed.
Sorry, I'm just.
No, no.
Ready, move, so you're gonna, keep moving, okay? So.
Yeah, I can tell you two more.
So why, why do we need an assistant principal at Johnson School?
Yeah, they still.
Now, as an insider, I think that administrators are greatly underappreciated. Now, as an insider, I think that administrators are greatly underappreciated. They work tirelessly and pretty much seven days a week, as you heard, Dr. Carver, especially with all of this social, rise in social emotional issues. And all the tracking we have, obviously the consequence of that is somebody's got to investigate all of those things and, and take action where appropriate. So we have a slide about some of the things that school administrators do. And certainly we have, they are responsible for their schools and improving their schools and putting forth a, a plan to improve their school's curriculum and programs. Evaluating staff, certified and uncertified staff, attending lots of meetings. And you can see the list. And, and a great deal of, of this involvement in the second column with parents, community and members, community members. More and more, as I said, the social and emotional piece is occupying our administrators to investigate these incidents. And so anyway, this is a partial list, as I said, of the primary responsibilities of the, of the administrator. And in Johnson School, given the number of students that are going to be in that school with pre-grades, absolutely necessary.
I just wanted to provide you a little context and data, kind of how we, cause people frequently say, well, it's administrative top-heavy, right? And you frequently hear that. But if you really look at our data compared to the state, per central office, we're kind of right on par. But if you look at our school administrative staff, we're actually under the state average for the, a number of students and the level of complexity of the needs that we're serving. So that just kind of illustrates that. In addition, if we don't add that additional person, we're talking about one administrator for six hundred and eighty-seven students. It's just an impossible job to be able to do. And even with two, it's still going to be about three hundred and forty-four students per administrator. Now, you, the middle schools are a little less, just based on their current population. But I will say, middle schools are the craziest years, just in terms of social emotional needs. Developmentally, they're not adults, they're not kids. They have, they have much more complex needs. And the high school is about three hundred and fourteen to one right now. If you look at the, so I, I just probed our, our area schools to see, do you have assistant principals at your elementary school? What's the threshold for you bringing in? How many students do you need to actually bring on a second person? And you'll note that most of the school districts do have assistant principals as their model. And they range anywhere from three hundred and seventy-five students up to six hundred students, which is Danbury. And that's what we're talking about, kind of a comparison to bring that extra person on. There are some school districts that I wasn't able to get responses to quickly. And I do wanna explain Ridgefield, cause I did have a long conversation with their interim superintendent. Their elementary schools, you probably know better than I do, Brian, what are they, about two hundred, three hundred kids? Yeah, they have at least one and a half administrators in their schools to help support the overall needs. And it's, it's not just dealing with the social emotional piece, but it's dealing with the teacher evaluations, planning and placement team meetings, all of those other pieces. It's just a lot.
Dr. Carver, let me just ask one, what, we have, all of our schools have an assistant principal, right?
No.
No?
That's why we're asking for one.
I'm under that impression.
No, no, the only, none of our elementary schools do currently. And Barry's population is what, four hundred in size, five hundred with circle? Yeah.
It's up there.
Yeah, five hundred, it's close to five hundred. Now, Ms. Devias, our specialist supervisor, is also based out of there too. So that helps a little bit, but we, we've never had them in our elementary schools.
But next year Barry will be a little over four hundred.
Yeah, right.
Cause third grade is moving up, so that, that's like in line. And Rock will be into the three hundreds, which is a typical one principal setting.
Right.
But, but, yeah, we'll be up almost seven hundred students in Johnson.
This is just more data, it just shows the relationship between disciplinary referrals. And obviously at the high school, you're gonna see the most. We did have a drop in disciplinary referrals between this year and last year. But I would say the intensity of what we're dealing with is different. And that, and I think that's part of the primary difference, cause that's a big part of that job, so.
What were you get, what was the cost on that?
Which budget were you at?
Budget.
What, is it one-twenty-four?
Budget is, oh, that was previous, like, I'll have to find that for you.
I, I wanna say it's like one-twenty-four to one-thirty.
Yeah, it's around there.
Right. And lastly, you never thought we would end. Why do we need an custodian?
Dr. Carver, before you, did Brian ask what the price was for the assistant?
Yes, I have to find, I have to find that.
One-twenty-four to one-thirty.
I, I believe it's in that range for, for a, for a beginning assistant, elementary assistant principal.
And benefits runs a little.
And benefits.
Yeah, the twenty-two, yeah.
So I, I don't know if you remember, but in two thousand and eighteen, remember the state cut our funding?
Yes.
In that year, the board gave back, uh, how much did we get back?
Almost a million dollars.
Right, because we lost it, we had a vacancy at the time. And we lost a custodian that year. So we had twenty-three, we went down to twenty-two. And, and the vacancy is at the middle school currently. And we joke, Mr. Watson's giving me the eye, we joke that we move people, and then when a principal gets mad, we move people.
I keep moving the hall, till, till the principal yells loud.
And they kind of know that now. But here's the reality, the reality is, it's too much square footage. They can't, the, they're, they're not able to cover the ground. People are gonna say this has something to do with the fieldhouse, this has nothing to do with the fieldhouse.
You were talking about this last year.
Right.
And you got mad because I said, have the kids empty the waste baskets?
I did!
And we do.
See?
So many maintenance.
Mr. Troy.
It's a career.
It's, it's, it's to the point, especially with the increase in square footage in Johnson. We're gonna have to shift people again, and we're just out of bags of trips.
So just a question, a lot of times in municipalities like mine, when we don't fill a position, the salary's still there. Did you remove this salary from your budget?
We did.
So the custodian position was removed from the salary, so it wasn't a frozen position?
No.
The salary was still in the.
It was taken out.
And I hope someone else could ask what the cost of the custodian. I was interested.
It's approximately fifty.
Plus twenty-two for benefits.
So I say again, Terry, please?
It's approximately fifty.
I have a question, because that fifty would include benefits, so.
No.
No?
Custodians, you don't.
Twenty-two for all.
Plus twenty-two. Yeah, that's what I mean, fifty plus the twenty-two.
It would be a benefited position, yes.
Is there any benefit or cost savings to hiring a company to supplement the cleaning versus an employee?
The position's unionized.
Okay.
And so it, because of the union, we, we are not allowed to do that. I will say our custodians are incredibly flexible. They have allowed us to bring in companies at times, especially with the renovations, to help with cleaning for certain purposes, but we could not.
Do it on a day-to-day basis.
Dude, this, you, she just kinda brought up a thought. With all the like viruses that are kinda floating around right now, like, do you have special custodial units that you can call? Like, to do like a deep cleaning of the school, like, if you have a flu outbreak, like, how do you guys handle that? Is that contracted services or?
No, well, we take advices, we take our, our, our cue from Laura Pasille. Because every virus has its own nuance, like, deep cleaning for flus won't necessarily do a thing. Because the second another child comes in and sneezes, it's not gonna make a difference in terms of the, the cleaning. There are other things like MRSA and, uh, health measures, that's some other big diseases that we've had, we've had to. Yeah. So some, our custodians oftentimes do it, based on the training from Laura Pasille.
Right.
And I would say that's most of the time, correct?
Most of the time, yeah.
Um, I have been, if anybody's interested, I've been getting regular updates from Laura on, it's, he's got a new name, it's not coronavirus anymore.
COVID-nineteen.
Yes, uh, COVID-nineteen, yes.
Yes.
Um, and we have been getting a lot of guidance from Laura on that. And the, New Jersey put out some guidelines for schools. And again, it's kinda like the flu. You really can, cleaning will not mitigate it and the spread of it. But we're constantly looking and taking that feedback from the Department of Health if we have to deal with an issue.
And you know in the state of Connecticut, we're required to use green cleaning products. But we can get authorization from Laura when we have something to then use.
A light salt.
Right, we can't use cloths. Um, so just to, just to kinda wrap it up here, some of the other budget drivers. Health insurance, we originally budgeted ten percent. So as you know, we're on the state partnership, partnership plan, as is the town. We originally were told that we had to budget at ten percent. They, they implemented a Fairfield County increase of two percent. So all Fairfield County communities got an extra two percent in the increase. And it has to do with the cost of doctors and things in this region. But we were able to bring it back to eight percent, but it really represents about seven hundred thousand dollars of the increase, a little more than seven hundred thousand dollars of the increase. Also, I just wanna point out, due to busing, we have to add another bus due to our enrollment, just to make the, the routes work. And so that's approximately sixty thousand dollars plus gas.
Plus diesel.
Right. The contractual increases, just our normal bargaining unit increases are part of the increase, as you see in salary benefits. And then new to us is, in the area of technology. The state will be requiring soon districts to implement cybersecurity plans. I don't know if you've seen across the state, there have been districts that have been held for ransom.
And towns.
And towns, municipalities also. So we're really spending a lot of time beefing up our cybersecurity network. And in part of that requires assessments of the systems so that we can test our own vulnerability. And then implement different things to try to counter that. So part of the reasons.
And software.
And software. So part of the reasons that you see some increases in some of our technology line is directly linked to that. And the other thing is because we have more students, we have more subscriptions. So even things like Power School, we pay per student, per student cost. Power School is our student information system. So there's in, there's increases in some of our software lines that's directly linked to the increased population for subscriptions that we've had for kids that we have to just expand over time. So you'll see some of that in the budget. And then we've also tried to continue to work on efficiencies, and I'll talk a little bit more in the next slide. We're really trying to streamline our human resources because we're basically, we're understaffed in that department too. Trying to create, reduce paperwork and have self-service options. So instead of calling Lila for, for something that you might need, there's software programs that we can implement that would create a structure to it. Much partly like you did in the permit department, right? To be able to do that. And we're also, it's gonna reallocate some staff. We have to bring a world language teacher to the middle school to deal with the bubble classes at the middle school. And we've, we're moving teachers around there from sixth to seventh grade clusters to seventh to eighth grade clusters. Just so we can minimize the impact of those bubble classes. And then we're also looking at other things too. I think you all know that myself and Tom McMoran from Eastern Reading Region Nine started a regional efficiencies work group. We brought the superintendents across the region together. We continue to work on things that we can collaborate with to reduce costs and spending. Our biggest kind of things is collaborative technology purchasing and specialized transportation. We, we're going up to bid for our bus contract this year, next year, sorry, next year. But we've, we've looked at maximizing our bus routes, and much to some of the dismay of some of our families, we've gone to a lot more community stops. Cause it's just more efficient in terms of moving kids around the district. And we're also looking at negotiating within the region for our students with disabilities for special ed. The big thing that we're working on long-term is a lot of our neighboring districts want to work on developing regional special ed schools. I shared with you that a special ed outplacement can be anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. And we're coming together, and we've gone to our state delegation. Because we need seed money to, to, to actually renovate buildings. So that we can see if we can develop regional programs as an option for students with disabilities, so we can avoid some of those outplacements. I'm gonna tell you we're working on it, but it's going to take years to, to come to fruition. Because it's something that is gonna take a lot of time. But, but I want you to know, there's a group of superintendents in the region that are actively working on it. And then we always purchase through consortiums, and actually tomorrow night, we're considering opening school-based health centers in our schools. And we're getting a presentation for that tomorrow night. And what that is, is that a community agency, I've worked in other districts that have had them. A community agency would come in and they would provide mental health services right in our middle and high school. And they could do things like medication management and see kids for counseling and see families for counseling. And you remove the barrier of a child having to go out to somebody, so they're more likely to get services. So we're looking, board is hearing a presentation tomorrow night to see if we wanna enter into that kind of contract. It's, it's highly successful, and it's actually built off an insurance model. So the agency pays in, may provide the service, it bills the insurance for the family. And if the family doesn't have insurance, it's essentially free. Or if they get husky, or they're on the state plan, it'll get billed through that. And so we're hoping that it's just another way to get support for our students' mental health needs without costing them more money.
Can we provide the space?
We, oh, yeah, we have to.
But we're not on the hook for the operating costs.
All we have to do is provide the room and the phone. But other than that, the cost of the, all the employees associated with that comes through the agency, community health. So we're looking at that too.
Would that person be there in the school every day?
So yes, so that.
That program?
We're gonna hear the presentation tomorrow night. But the way, when I worked in a previous district, yes, they were there Monday through Friday. They had, they had, sometimes they had staggered hours, and they were doing like family therapy also. And, and they also had some summer rounds, so they also provided for summer. As an extension of school-based health centers, they also do physical health too. I, I think at this point, we're not looking at that. Because that would involve like renovations of buildings, you'd need bathroom exam spaces, those kinds of things. But, but it, it could be a good resource to the district that wouldn't cost us anything except the space. To, to provide increased mental health services.
And how does that save us money though, I'm not sure.
It doesn't save us money, it provides more services to kids that we.
Cause this is like cost-saving measures, right?
Right.
Well, it reduces capacity.
She's fair, you're right. Yeah, it, it, right.
I mean, if we're saying that we have problems serving our kid, the social and emotional needs, it's increasing capacity without paying for it, that's what we're paying for. Having a resource, I do not think there are really readily available resources for a lot of kids with. You know, you, there just aren't resources out there, you have to wait long periods of time for access to, to specialists in this field. So this would give our families a great benefit at no cost to the district.
So in these cost-saving measures that are up here, what is the expectation, what's, what's the biggest hit? And what's the, what are the priorities here?
Well, at long-term, the regional special ed school would be the, would be the, the, I think the most significant.
At long-term is what, five, ten years?
Oh, no, 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 I would say if, if, well, if we, if they get the state funding, the seed money to do, which it looks like they might because the governor's very interested in putting seed money into regionalized efforts. So they, and, and to reduce the special ed cost, cause on the state level also. So it, it looks like he might be supportive of that. Our group is meeting with the, his office and our, and some of the legislators in the state level. If, if everything kind of played into, you're talking about two or three years, you could start a school.
And what about some of the other?
Well, some of the other stuff we're doing now, like the consortium pricing, we do all the time. We're, that we're using the special ed transportation piece all the time, which is really a ride-share program.
It's really helped us from the cost that's.
Right, so if we're sending a child to CES in Trumbull, and Ridgefield and Newtown are sending a, a kid to that same area. Instead of paying three hundred dollars Bethel, we can share the ride and go down. The other benefit to the, to what we've done is we also put in there what other, what the private companies are charging us. So I know if Ridgefield's paying this amount, and we have bargaining tools within that. It's really, you're gonna ask, how much has that saved? It's really hard, it's hard to quantify, and I'll tell you why. Because it's, it's individual kids, sometimes they're not there for the full school year, or things change within the dynamics. It's just a, it's just a, an overview of ways that we're trying to address ways to.
I think last year you talked about collaborative.
The technology.
Efforts, even beyond the technology within, within the region. And obviously, especially. And obviously, the special ed is one area, but there were other areas, I believe, last year that you were kind of addressing.
Definitely the technology, definitely the special ed transportation. Um, we've talked about other things, like, um, is, is there a way we can share staff? For example, one of our teachers.
Administrative type things.
Yeah, yeah, one of our teachers with a deaf is going to retire and maybe we only do it three days a week and they, the, uh, Newtown needs one two days a week. So we've talked about those relationships too. Um, it's, I'm going to tell you, I, I think I said this last year, it's like herding ants in a picnic. It's really hard to bring a group of fifteen towns together and get them to agree on anything. I mean, I, I've spent countless hours trying to get them to agree to things. Because, uh, you know, in Newtown, they like it this way and they have different charters and they have different bidding and they have different ways that they do it. Their contracts are different than our contracts, but we continue to plug away on it. Like, I, uh, we're pretty relentless about keeping the conversation on.
Have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, the social economic, or social emotional. The social emotional coach. Would that, the program that you're talking about for tomorrow night to learn with Laura thirty seconds ago.
School-based health.
Oh, yes, yes.
Would that be something that?
Would supplement it.
Supplement? It doesn't replace the need, but they could work.
Absolutely, and they could help make referrals to the, to the, to the, the people that need, um, the, the children that need the services.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I remember last year, I hope I'm not, um, making this up, that the state was supposed to reimburse us for transportation for special ed students, but wasn't. But like, the money wasn't for cutting.
Two slides away.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I'll wait. Didn't mean to steal your thought. So, uh, so where's the revenue? You have a list of all the grants that we get, but in addition to that, so here's where ECS is. I think ECS is stable at this point. Um, the governor recently came out and, and everything that we're hearing from the state is they're not going to be cutting things, um, in terms of overall ECS. The district gets about seven point seven million, about that, uh, or the town gets it, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the district doesn't get it, the town gets it. You see that dip? That was the year that they didn't give it to us. Um, but we think it's stable. Um, I, you know, I think this is not just a local issue, I think it's a Connecticut issue. They have to make a commitment to education because it's really been flat funded or declining for years. But to your point, uh, to the next slide, so this is the excess caps for reimbursement caps for special ed. So essentially what happens is that the state is supposed to reimburse four and a half times the expense, um, that you would do on a per pupil expenditure if we place a student on an outplacement. Every year they cap it. Um, and it's not gotten better. So we think it's going to be about seventy-four percent again, that the cap is going to be seventy-four percent. And we actually, uh, budget for that, correct?
We budgeted negative in our, in our numbers.
So that means for every student that's sent out, the state does reimburse us seventy-four percent of that?
When you exceed, when you exceed, what's fifteen thousand times four and a half?
Yeah.
Six thousand.
Sixty-five thousand, right?
Sixteen times four and a half.
Fifty-seven thousand.
So you have sixty-seven five, okay, so we're on the hook for the first sixty-seven five. If, if the child costs a hundred.
They're supposed to give us a difference.
They're supposed to give us the difference from the state.
But they don't.
They give you seventy-five percent.
We're supposed to get thirty-two point five from the state, because we're supposed to get everything above paying four and a half.
Right.
But we only get twenty, about twenty-three.
Right. So that's, that's, I think what you were referring to, yeah. So, and that does not look like it's getting better. Um, in terms of the commitment, long-term from the state. So that brings us to.
Crossroads.
Here we are again.
Which is my slide, Dr. Carver.
So.
I'm sorry, before, I, I'm assuming this is the grand finale.
Right.
About, we're building up to the grand finale.
Anyone have, Brian, go.
Well, maybe, and I'll let you decide whether you want to answer this after Crossroads or not.
Are we after Crossroads?
So, the Board of Ed does a wonderful job. And you felt very strongly in increasing the superintendent's budget this year. What I would like to know is, you've already kind of gone over the needs. Which positions that we've gone over, did you add to the superintendent's budget this year?
We added the social emotional coach.
Hold on, I'm slow writer, coach, roll.
And the three math interventions.
Would you say that again?
The social emotional coach and the three math interventionists. Those are the positions added by the Board of Education.
Okay.
Originally, Dr. Carver had in her budget an assistant principal at Johnson School and a student.
And the two elementary.
And the two elementary.
And two elementary teachers.
Thank you.
And I have three kind of final questions, but for me. In one of the workshops, Terry, the, um, the health benefits were, were increased, was estimated to be about ten percent. You were waiting for some final information. It looks like in what was presented by the board, it's at nine point one three increase.
Well, it's, it, the health insurance piece, you're looking at total there, but, well, you know what it is? It went down, let me explain, it went down from ten to eight. So that was a reduction of a hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. However, when we added positions, I had to add benefits back. So that's why you landed on that. That's a blend of the eight percent plus adding the other position.
Okay, so the eight percent is kind of the latest and then you had to.
And I think eight percent will be, I'm not sensing that it will go lower than that.
Okay, good deal, thank you. Kind of a global question, just the school renovation, from your perspective, how's it going? What's, you know, everything I hear is that it's, it's on budget, on time, more or less, are you hearing anything different?
Uh, so it's definitely on budget. Um, Johnson is significantly under budget, Rockwell's a little bit over budget. Um, I, I actually talked to our, the owner's rep yesterday and they've only spent, I think she said half percent in contingency. So, and they're, they're well into the project, um, so they're in a really, really good space. Um, so the budget is in, uh, uh, everything that I think was anticipated or most has been found. Um, and so that's in good shape. In terms of time, um, phase one did extend longer. Um, so we were supposed to have the addition done at Rock Johnson.
At Johnson.
Um, by the holiday break, um, it's likely, uh, last December. Um, there, it, they are definitely going to be moving into the new addition on, um, uh, the weekend of the sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth. Uh, or March.
March.
March, so in a couple of weeks, they're going to be moving in. The fifth grade's going to be moving into the new space at that point. Um, and Rockwell, uh, is also in the position where they, uh, we were hoping that they could move at the same time. There's only one little pickup, which is getting the elevator installed. Um, the, getting, apparently getting Otis out to do that. And we can't move the kids up until the elevator's installed. Everything else is pretty much there, um, in terms of being done. Uh, they anticipate, um, from what I understand, making up the time in the next phase, because it's much smaller than the first phase at Rockwell. Um, so it's, it's, I mean, I'm not going to lie, on a day-to-day basis, it's a headache. But in general, it's progressed pretty nicely.
And, and don't read anything into my asking that.
And if anybody would like a tour, uh, we'd be happy to take you through. Uh, just let us know, um, and, uh, we likely are, we're going to have a parent session on Tuesday night, kind of let them know what the next phases are, who's moving where, what, what kids will lose, what, what areas of the building that they're going into, um, but we're definitely taking you through zone if you'd like to.
And the school side is cooperating as much as we can to assist them. The theme is still on schedule.
Right.
We're turning kitchens over early, right, making other plans. Any way that we can help them get into spaces, get going, yeah.
As the finishes come in, it's really lovely. They're just lovely, just to see the light in the rooms and it's just great.
I have a financial question.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's lovely, and I, I will be taking you up on a tour.
Good.
Um, so sort of what Bob was asking, um, you said Rockwell was over?
Right.
And, and.
I didn't rant with me, but Rockwell's about.
I just, here's what I want to know, um, because it's different things, you know, you hear different things.
Yeah, yeah.
So what I was told, um, was that Rockwell was over, uh, close to a million dollars.
Right.
All right, and that the other one is under. So here's, here's what my question is. Are they two discrete projects or are they one project? Because if you're a million dollars over budget on one school, that's lost money because you're not going to get reimbursed for that. Am I right about that? And then the other one under budget, it's under budget, we're just not going to be borrowing it.
You're not, you're partially right, so let me explain.
Okay, partially.
So in terms of the town budget, it was one appropriation for both projects.
Right, that I know.
So on the town level, it's fine. On the state level, um, the, the overage is primarily due, so I, I don't even want to say it's over because there's still seven hundred thousand dollars of contingency that's not been used, okay? So it, so it may not be a million over. It might be, it might be, I just don't know because the project's not done yet. But, so, but theoretically, if it goes over and it's because of environmental reasons, um, I've already had conversations with the Office of School Construction.
Okay.
Um, and you file something called a.
An R.
R, it's an R.
It's level forty-two R.
Right, and if you can make the case that it's related to the, the, uh, environmental issues, which it is, um, then, then.
Then you can declare the eligible costs.
Right, right, and so they have already indicated to me that, that they will, uh, be cooperative around that, so.
That's good news.
Yes, so, um, I think, again, I think it's in, it's in good shape.
We have.
I think it'll likely come under, the projects will come under.
Just, just to let you know, oh, I'm sorry. We, we had the town attorney verify that before we got this file.
Right, right.
It doesn't matter, it's, it's still reimbursed.
Correct, in terms of the, in, in terms of the localized.
Yeah.
We're working hard on the eligible.
We are, we are, and we've, we've, we've been, I, I, I know because I do it and Terry helps me. We've, we've been filing to get the reimbursements every time the town asks us to maintain the cash flow. And so we'll continue to do that, so we're, we're already getting some of the reimbursements for that.
And the finality date is still solid?
Fall of two thousand twenty, uh, twenty twenty.
This year.
For, 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 for coming September.
Right, I, don't, don't get me wrong, they're not going to start school and everything's going to be perfect.
Well, we know that.
The playgrounds aren't going to be done, um, there's certain areas that aren't going to be, that are still going to need to be worked on. But, um, that is the date still, correct? That has not changed.
And all the abatements have been, have been completed?
No, um, there's a little bit of abatement at Johnson, uh, with some, um, asbestos, the mastic under the floor tile. Um, that will be done.
Summer?
Summer.
Because the sections, they haven't gone into, because remember, it's all phased. Because we're living there while it's being renovated.
They're also going to be abating, um, over April break, um, the gym at Rockwell. Uh, there's some asbestos under the, um, wood, yep. And, uh, and they're going to be doing some abatement, uh, over the summer in some of the cafeteria spaces. Um, so, so there's still some. Rockwell is much more of a challenge, uh, not because of asbestos, because of PCVs.
It's, it's the oldest one.
It is, it is, and they use it in all the paint, all paint.
Yeah, that and high school are same vintage.
Right. So, uh, but we've been working through it, um, uh, as, as we progress. That Rizzo's been great about, you know, doing it over holiday breaks around the weekends and it's all done, uh, with environmental monitoring and, uh, we do air testing right after the abatement, so, um, it's, and we communicate with parents before we do it, after we do it. So it's been, it's been going pretty well.
And truly appreciate the open communication, Bob. I would ask that you continue to timely file the progress payments.
We will.
I call Bob every Friday and ask him if it's in, right? Because every dollar we get from the state is a dollar or less that we have to pay.
Right.
So to the extent that the data's there, the information's ready, we, if you would, as soon as it's done, no hesitation, get it to Bob.
So I'm due to work on the next because we just got the check in.
I think you just got about six million, right?
Four million.
Four million, yeah.
Back, but we will, we promise you.
You just got four million back, right, now how?
So now I can file, but you can't file until I process the previous payment, so I'm due to work on that. I had to prepare for it tonight.
We'll do that tomorrow morning.
The night's still young.
And then my, my last question.
Sure.
For those who are sitting in here for the parking wreck presentation, this is probably no surprise, right? We've had a lot of requests for, uh, additional expenses that are going to generate revenues. Want to kind of get your sense, for example, the fieldhouse, right?
Right.
We've got sixty thousand dollars more of utilities to run the fieldhouse. What revenue will that generate and what will be turned into the general fund?
It, it's already generating revenue, um, in terms of, we're renting it out to like post-university, uh, different, uh, developmental meets. Uh, different organizations are coming in to do that. Part of it, that revenue is to offset some of the costs, uh, with supervision in the building and, and maintenance. I don't know that we've had a discussion about.
No, we haven't done an analysis yet of how it's coming in.
Which, I did follow up on the solar piece, and, uh, Mr. Karati is actively working on it. And the, the building is, um, was made to take solar panels and.
Immediately Friday.
Yes.
Uh, Friday, I mean, needly Friday to lay out.
You're putting in solar panels, I think that's what Matt said.
Right, and so that should offset the electricity cost, um, to a great extent, but it's still heated with natural gas. Right. So, um, so that's a part of that, but we're, 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 uh, accelerating that process, knowing that it's an expense to the town.
Oh, yes, this is Jansky. What about pre-K? It's always my favorite subject, as you know. Are we still, are we competitive with the surrounding?
We are, yeah. We are, and in fact, we don't have, we don't even have a waiting list at this point. So, um, I, I would say it, it would be difficult to raise that because we, we don't even have a waiting list for those that pay.
So you know.
We don't, we only have two sections that are full-day programs. And that's what parents want, is full-day programs, because it covers their work hours.
Yeah.
And so a lot of the half-day programs are small and they don't really offset the costs because the programs are primarily, uh, built to serve our special ed population. Because we have to serve children from age three to age twenty-one. Uh, so that's why they were originally built. It's a great asset to the community and the community loves it as a side. But unless we're willing to make more full-day classes.
I, I believe it's still competitive, but I believe it's also, uh, it's priced so, so that it markets well. And we do have typical peers that want to.
Oh, I want to come back to the revenue on the, the fieldhouse again, right? We're going to have the sixty thousand on the town side. Mill rate increase, based on what we see so far, is going to be meaningful. We offset that mill rate increase, or we can offset the mill rate increase by increasing revenue, right? We, last year, we began the education process that the, the, the final tax is a function of revenue less expenses. We know we have sixty thousand more in expenses, so we can help on the overall mill rate increase, to the extent we can get some revenue out of the fieldhouse and put it into the general fund. So I would ask that we work together in relatively short order to come up with a number that Bob can include in the budget on the revenue side.
Uh, but, in doing that, we would have to talk about on the board side, but in doing that, we would have to also net out the expenses because part of that was supposed to be doing for covering maintenance in the building, some other pieces. So we can look at it, but remember, this place has been open a month, a month and a half.
You don't know yet?
So I don't know.
So you're saying it's more than the sixty thousand in terms of the expense?
Well, when we have events, we do have someone that, we have a paid person there.
Okay.
Because you do have to have someone from that, paid by Bethel that's protecting our assets and making sure that not things aren't damaged. And I don't, we don't have a history yet on, on the continuity of the different groups that would be renting. We, we started off with a great, one great renter, which is a university that's using it. So I think time will give us better numbers, but we could try to work up some kind of an estimate. It's got to pay those expenses first though, of, of making sure it's running.
Right.
Paying the purpose of keeping it open.
So how much of, of the sixty is electric?
I don't know.
What was that?
How much of the sixty did you budget for electric?
Utilities.
Well, thirty thousand, thirty thousand electric, thirty thousand in, um, yes.
So the solar would eliminate.
It should.
Hopefully close to thirty, thirty.
Um, they, they believe that the solar will be net zero, right?
Yeah, no, 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 they lease it and it, and it, it comes out of the cost of it. I think that's what he explained to me, um, I also think he thinks, you know, that it can actually pump, um, it will produce more than that facility will need. And they're trying to hook it to the, they want to hook it to the high school to, um, to offset high, some of the high school electricity costs too.
Well, they can do a net metering and they just take the metering and they take it off the, the bills in town.
So that's what, that's his plan. So that's what, that's his plan there. And just as an aside, he, he's also working up a plan for Rockwell and Johnson. So that's also been built to take solar, um, so that hopefully over time, because that's on the town side also, I believe. Hopefully over time, you'll see a reduction in costs for electricity in those schools also because of the solar.
What's the timeline on the solar for the fieldhouse?
Um, he's meeting with him Friday, so you can get a better guess, correct?
One, one question, point here, like, when the cost for electrical there, when it's, when everything is on, there's a peak. This solar will cut that peak off.
Hmm, right.
So you'll have a constant, but the, the real peaks are where the meters stick it down faster. So what the solar is, is just cut these peaks off. It's called, it's called shaving.
Having in my house is beautiful thing. It really is.
But it is the.
For terms of cutting bill.
Did your payment actually go down?
Yes. By at least a third to a half.
And you're paying for the equipment?
I am leasing the equipment.
Well, that's what you're, that's what you're paying for.
Right. Right. It really did make a huge difference in personally.
Factoring in the cost of the panels too, when you factor in the cost.
That's what I mean, release your payments.
The panels were free. I pay like a night out among the cost for my panels.
But that's what paying for the panels.
Right. But when you look at though what you're not paying in electricity, it offsets it tremendously.
Is that generator back parking lot of high school really not operational?
No, it is, no, it is.
No, it's fully operated.
It's operating up? It's operating up?
That guy's like a whole school.
They had to really figure it out.
It's done. We, we used to be able to play one a year, but.
But remember, it's Bill Craddy's commission.
Right. That's running this solar.
Board of that is not familiar with the details of.
But we are, we are pushing it along.
But still, you know, I've been, um, Kuslawski, you, remember you said that you were going to try to break down the different savings from the solar?
Yeah, I talked to Bill, Bill was in the other day and we're trying to get a hand on that.
All right. So I think that's.
Grand finale?
Yeah.
Grand finale. So.
Keep going, Dave. So we, we.
This is.
We lost the crossfire. Yeah. Well, I think we, we would just like to sum up what we've seen tonight, what you've seen tonight, but we've been explaining tonight, our story. We really want to make a point that the administration, the staffing have always done more with less. We've always looked for ways to maximize our resources, move staff around, um, look for ways, um, to utilize the ones that we receive to the maximum, uh, for our kids, for our district, for our town. So, um, it's, what, what I'm saying is that we are running out of rabbits to pull out of our hat. It, we really have done everything we feel we can do. We have more challenges, we have more students, we have more needs. It's data, it's, it's there, it's how it is and, and it's trending upward that way. Um, so the subgroups are growing in our schools and as a result of their needs and numbers, we're reaching a point where if we don't start to do something, we're going to lose ground. So it's our job as a board of education to explain this to you, to tell you this. We're happy to answer any questions you have, that, that these are the numbers. And, um, you know, so that's where we are. So that brings the overall increase to four point six nine percent, which I think you know, uh, with the increase in last year's budget of two point, uh, one million, uh, as a summary to that. In terms of regionally, um, because, uh, the breakdown is there, I apologize. The two point five one percent includes the new positions, the eight new positions, plus the contractual increases. Um, so that's a combination of things. Um, the benefits you'll see is a significant portion of the budget. We talked about the busing and the transportation and adding a bus, little bit of an increase in special ed and it really has to do with mostly in our tuition lines. Um, the cost of the outplacements for the seventeen students we do have go up every year. And so we have to accommodate for that. And really, everything else is the point one eight. Um, and that's mostly due to like the cybersecurity stuff that we have to add, the increase of subscriptions. So in terms of like the supply lines and things like that, you don't see a lot of variation. You might see in the budget, uh, variation, but it's really to balance out within a school. Um, you know, Berry School might need more, uh, uh, libraries for their, for their classrooms. And so they may have made, may have made some line item shifts based on actual needs, but the overall increases in terms of supplies is pretty minimal.
And with third grade moving over, both staff as well as non-pairal items were all shipped, everything was shifted.
Right. So you'll see.
If you look last year to this year, you'll see a shift.
Right.
But overall, there's really not a, any increase.
There's no increase. Um, so, and that's the breakdown. And then I think that's just a summary of the page that you have in front of you. Um, and I think that's it for the, uh, we, we always include this, kind of the overall increase compared to surrounding communities. I'm not sure how useful this is, uh, because every district has a different story. But I did want to just point out that a lot of the districts that have low increases have declining enrollments. When you look at Danbury, Bethel, some of the other surrounding towns, I think the increases are directly related to increased levels of theeds. So.
Dr. Carver, do you, do you know, do any of the other schools have renovations going on that are adding to the town side?
Uh, so Brookfield is doing a, a huge elementary renovation project that they're just starting.
They haven't broke ground yet, right?
But they're, they're, uh, they have not. And they, I don't believe they've gotten state funding yet.
Do you know?
I don't know if they've gotten state funding yet. Um.
And they're, and they're, they're more, um, they had been declining and they're.
They're stable now.
They're stable.
They're not growing though.
They're not really growing.
Um, and I'm trying to think if any other surrounding communities have school, Danbury does.
Good Fairfield Field.
No Fairfield Field.
Fairfield Field does. They have a huge project, thank you.
Yeah.
They have a huge project, they're doing huge schools.
Their enrollment has dropped significantly.
So.
Um, excuse me. The transportation that increases, is that for special ed, I just want to confirm, understandable way.
It's, it's, oh, an additional bus.
An actual bus, just a regular one.
And for contractual increase.
Yes, three percent contractual increase.
Right.
Is there transportation, other transportation that used for people, for out, um, non-residents who are special ed that, that make, pay tuition? Do you not have to bring them or?
No. We don't pay transportation for any non-residents. Pay tuition.
Yeah.
And we only have, I think, one student right now.
Yes.
One or two.
Right.
That pay tuition to attend our schools.
Okay. The tuition is without.
Right. The responsibility is that if they're going to pay tuition to come to the district, they, parents have to bring them.
Okay. Just curious.
So. And I think that's it. Uh, and then that goes to the four sixty. I don't know if you want to take a little break?
Take a five minute break.
Why don't we take a five minute, when Bob come to the table?
Okay.
Thank you very much. As always, welcome.
Thank you.
Driving me crazy.
Give Matt another buck.
I'll think about it.
Not so many fans with the four sixty.
No.
It was the best one.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, we're out of recess. Did you bring, did you bring your gavel? Can, can I borrow your gavel?
No gavels. We're gavel free zone.
Are we, are we running again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so the four sixty account you have, uh, is, is one of your appendices, um, and it provides in four different areas. Uh, we're requesting fifty thousand dollars more, which is the funding that we had requested last year, um, and did get cut to four fifty. Um, and it's a combination of, uh, prevent, preventive maintenance. And I do want to correct, um, Bob whispered something to me, I was wrong. Uh, the, the snow plowing is a line in the highway's budget that Bob oversees. So I, I, I.
For the snow plowing of the schools?
Uh-huh.
For the schools.
It's for the schools, but is in the highway budget, so.
Yeah.
So I wanted to just clarify that. Um, uh, you'll see most of it is around contracts that we have for preventive maintenance. Uh, there's an increase in that area, uh, because, uh, the, the complexity of the technology, if you want to add up.
Yep.
Um, no, no, just the, the different, uh, systems that we have running. Um, I think, I, I, I would say overall that we're, we're getting a grip on some of the HVAC issues in the other three schools. Um, the, the, you approved, was it last year or the year before?
Uh-huh. Over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, some money is to recommission.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've been through Berry School.
Middle.
Middle School and now we're going to the high school. We don't have breakdown, right?
We don't have. Is this in a PDF, the breakdown of what you're reading?
No, you would have received, you would have also.
Yes, Brad, where's that?
Yeah, it's, it's in the.
In a PDF?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you have, you have this breakdown, which talks about our funding last year and this year. Um, and then, and then you have the backup that actually shows the different contracts for the fire.
It shows you the individual practices that make up the four sixty.
Right.
See, four sixty is broken into four components that we track. One is, you know, one, uh, is the management of blanket POs and our supply accounts. And that's what services the town maintenance crew along with our, our school maintenance crews is the same. Then I have my outside contractor funding, that's the contractors I need to service the schools in various areas.
And you have a list of all those. Yep.
And then my preventive maintenance contract, these are my elevator contract, these are my larger, high-scale stuff. And then we have the school building repairs and maintenance account. Now what this is, these are the, um, actual maintenance I have to do within the buildings themselves. And this data comes from the principal's needs along with my needs, uh, to keep the buildings up and running, such as maybe changing floor tile or painting, things of that nature. Large, larger projects. And that's what the four sixty, four oh six.
And they're listed, they have the detailed.
Yeah, and on, on all that, now.
So they, they're not for John, Johnson and Rockwell, they're each of the other three schools, there's a page for each of the other three schools.
So it, as you turn the page, you'll see how it, uh, four sixty, uh, A, B, C, and D is broken down. So I, not, I don't know exactly what you see in front of you, I think you see that.
No, you should, they have this.
They have all of that.
Okay. As you see, we didn't, we didn't, uh, took anything in for Rockwell and Johnson this year for, for obvious reasons. Uh, but there is some expenses that I can absorb through my two oh seven, which are my, my, uh, individual maintenance that I have to call in. Arc or router to do a drain clean now or, or something like that, I could absorb that. Um, so we're, we're not asking for anything for Rockwell and Johnson. And we probably won't for a while yet because after these items come on, it's going, going to be warranty, under the warranty. Berry High School and Middle. Now, you, as you go through the Berry High School and Middle, you'll see projects that we brought to the, the surface. These are items that have been either deferred in the past couple of years and now it's time to start doing some of these before they get too real costly. And the first page you see is the high school. And at the high school during the twenty-ten renovation, um, there was a large, uh, quadrant of the building that was left non-air-conditioned. And air conditioning is very important because it throws off the entire balance of the airflow in the building if it's, because you're going to get these very, very hot spots and then you're going to get these very cold spots. And as the engineer explained to us that, Dr. Carver just explained that we brought an engineer on to look at some of our needs. He pointed out that these specific areas are, are going to be required to have AC in them. And so this is what we're, are averaging, uh, for these Mitsubishi units that do two or three classrooms at a time. And we've been doing this as a continuing, this will be the third year we've been doing this.
And they're very targeted areas.
They are.
Yeah, in fact.
They're stifling, they're like ninety-five, ninety-eight.
They're stifling and they.
This is what you have in here.
And they have a propensity for mold, so we.
Didn't you have like a window area this year in one?
We did, um, we, we've done it in several places for special ed needs. Actually, after the renovations, the only school that won't have a hundred percent air conditioning is the high school. And, uh, and there's, the infrastructure in the renovation project was, um, uh, it's, it, you can't do it without spending millions of dollars.
So this, this is taking, this is a, a cost-effective way to air conditioning the student areas. And that's what we're targeting, just the student classroom areas. And some of the other additional, um, items we're looking to do, we've noticed now that. And some of the other additional, um, items we're looking to do, we've noticed now that, a couple of years ago, we, we put a brand new floor in the, um, in the gym. And we've, we've, we've maintained it, but on our level of maintenance and what it really requires, it requires, if we go with a service contract from a licensed company that does this every day, this will take care of these floors every year. In other words, if we have a problem, we're not trying to fumble to fix it. The company comes in, they do it. They repair the oak. This oak floor is, is very, very delicate. You really have to maintain it. And you'll get thirty to fifty years out of it if it's done correctly. And I'm not saying we, we don't do it right, but sometimes you're, you're under time constraints, you know, money. It's easier just to pick the phone up, have it done correctly, and it's like an insurance policy.
And I want to say that this is, and you can read the whole list. You don't have to read it to you.
Yeah.
But, but I think that, um, every year we have to make decisions because something always happens. And we end up spending this money on fixing something else.
An emergency.
So, this is a kind of, I, I view it as a wish list if we can get to it. But a lot of times we end up spending it on other items that come up.
Fortunately, this time around, you're, you're getting new boilers, you're going to have a new chiller.
Right.
So, you know, hopefully you're not, you're not, you're not going to spend any money on those particular items, at least for this next year until we get into maintenance in the following years. I mean, you should, those should be safe.
Right. But what, what you just said though, with that new equipment, it has to be maintained right from day one.
Maintain, yes.
Do you have service contracts? Well, you have a warranty period.
Right. But that's, that page, you'll see that my service contracts are targeting some of my high end equipment, uh, in the buildings.
Right.
And then some of the stuff I, I have to, by mandate, the sprinklers, the fire alarm, you know, the boiler instructors, the elevators, that, that's the stuff I mandated I have to do. And that, and that's the type of stuff that can't be done in-house. I have to actually have the records on hand in case the inspector comes in.
Yep.
So, just one quick, Bob, you do a great job every year with the schools.
Thank you.
Since I've been here, your account's been between four fifty, I think a high year, five something. My only question is like, on the eight thousand that you're requesting the higher company to do this yearly, wouldn't that be better served going up into your operating line? Cause it's going to be reoccurring every year and it's not like normally I thought the four sixty, this would be a one-time expense, rather than if it's going to be eight thousand a year to have this company.
Right.
Do the high school floors, wouldn't that go into our maintenance contracts up above?
Eventually, eventually it, it will go into that line, but we have to start it.
So, you want to start here, but the understanding is, is next year we'll realize that your maintenance account will go up from the whatever two twenty-four is now to two thirty-two, those contracts.
You're right, yes.
Alright, that's all.
So, Brian, there's one number in the town budget. It's only, this is one line item in the town budget.
Just an actual person.
Bob, Bob tries to break it out so you guys can really see the operations of what he's doing within that.
So, so, I understand what you're saying.
So, the accounting wise, they don't get, you know, right. To be honest, town finance isn't so concerned, it's, um, over a little bit in one line and then another.
No, but, but.
Bob tries to manage it that way.
But in fairness, in fairness for, for our board, we look at things as this is a reoccurring expense. Most of the time when we look down that, we would think that's a capital one time.
Yep.
Like when he replaces auditorium chairs.
Right.
Look, I think his budget's a no brainer. It's the same every year. I mean, we really don't.
Well, not a no brainer, I mean.
Right.
Yeah. He understands. Bob knows that.
But one, one of the goals I'm heading for with that, um, maintenance contract for the floors, very soon from now, I'm going to have two more brand new floors. Along with the middle school floor, I'm hoping to, to get that, as you see in the back there, I'm hoping to get that brought up to the same level as the high school. So, I mean, you're talking a very big asset for the town. These are revenue generating types of gyms.
Yeah.
What is the cost to replace a basket, the floor and the basketball, like if you had to replace that wood floor in there? What's the amount?
You're talking a hundred grand.
Yeah. So, but what's the, um, average cost of an incident, let's say? Like, let's say you have a problem at the high school and a problem at another school, like what would the cost be?
Well, I can give you some data from, from when we had the high school. The high school had, uh, areas where moisture was getting underneath and it was raising the boards. So, you would look across and you'd see these like little peaks and valleys. And just to get those repaired, that's about three or four thousand dollars each.
For one incident.
Right. Because you, they have to carefully.
Kids playing basketball.
They have to carefully move that back in. And it's, it's a real trick.
So, this is more about repairs, not having to do, because when you do them.
No, I think you're talking about refinishing it. I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about bringing. For the year, for that, for the high school is eight thousand dollars, just for the high school.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, is he's saying, look, if it was just to save us from replacing it, I mean, math would tell you eight thousand times twenty years is a hundred sixty thousand. You could probably just let it roll. I think what he's saying is you don't have to do as many repairs to it.
Correct.
When you have this maintenance contract in, like it won't have the three thousand, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, but if we roll our dice, so you kind of do what you do each year, and we get twelve years out of it, we're ahead of the game.
Yeah, cause you're, you could have lost.
Well, we look at twenty, these old floors are twenty year plus floors that are maintained correctly. But eight thousand for, for twenty years, we've paid for it twice. Actually, it's a little under eight. I rounded it up to eight, the actual, I have an actual quote.
Your, your point's taken. Yes.
Hold on, I'm just trying to.
Yep. So, it, it, you know, I don't want to, you know, like I said, we don't want to read every item, but if you have any questions on any of these items.
I did just have a strange question. You said that these are revenue producing facilities like the gym. Can you give me an example of what you would get revenue for and where does that revenue go?
Well, you would have to ask parking recs.
Oh, they're parking recs. They're not school.
We do have a board of it policy for outside facilities use, and we have, we have charges for that. And the revenue offsets our expenses towards.
But it's very minimal.
Yeah, and it's not a lot.
We don't rent our room.
Um, sometimes the auditorium will be rented out and it's, it's a little bit more by a private company, but it's not as often as you think.
Right. No, I, it's, it's when you said revenue generating. Like, how is that different?
The point I was trying to make is that these are town assets.
Oh, town assets. All about that.
High end assets.
So, Terry, I'm sorry, yeah. Gosh, I'd never really thought about this. Sell a basketball game, for example. That's what I usually think of as the gym use right during the basketball season. Um, I forget, I think, we pay ten dollars, right? Your wife and I would pay ten dollars a head to go see a high school basketball game. That goes into the parking rec revenue?
No.
No.
No. We're not talking about, uh, athletic events that we sponsor. Occasionally, a group will ask to use our facility from the outside. And there, we have a, we have a policy, there's rental fees associated with it, um, and that money offsets the cost of like custodians and different pieces that, uh, come in for. It's not as frequent as you think though.
That's pretty rare, isn't it?
Yeah, we don't rent the spaces.
Because we don't charge park and rec, we don't charge a lot of the nonprofits and that whole, you know, so it's not as, it's not as, it's not a big moneymaker, that's for sure.
Yeah, but you should assess then, park and rec for the use of your gym floor, for repairing your gym floor.
Yes. Partner, Mr. Strahan.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean.
Well, Paul asks you to raise the revenues, let's go.
We're being kind.
He's seeing dollars on it.
It's one town. We own the building. It's one town.
Fifty cents a seat for sporting.
That's right. Your revenue.
Bring us back in, Bob. Bring us back.
Please. At the high school, um, you know, the high school was built in the seventies. And that beautiful stonework in the front, the courtyards and, and on the side, it's starting to show its age big time. And I have a quote here to actually repair what they call repointing and re-rocking, um, all that courtyard. Because now with the track house there, and they did a beautiful landscaping with the sidewalk and the, and the nice, uh, light lanterns down there, we need to kind of keep up with that.
See, that's what happens. It starts to look crappy.
You paint one room, you gotta paint them all. That's terrible.
But seriously, though, if I don't start repairing, like the courtyards in the front of the building, the rock work in the front, it just looks, you know.
That wasn't done during the renovation.
No.
There's a lot that looks wrong.
Can't we do a masonry internship or something?
That's, that's like when I wanted the kids to empty the base baskets, have solid management. She wants to get a mason.
I know they were, I know they were joking about it, once you paint one room, you have to do all of them.
Please, please.
But honestly, I remember we went to a couple of meetings in the street, and just having a dirty pile on the roof, I'm staring at it the whole time. And I'm like, I'm a forty something year old adult and I can't maintain my concentration looking up at this. So, I mean, honestly, that maintenance, you know, James K. Wilson, a famous criminologist, talked about broken windows. You let one thing broken, everything's broken. So, again, you know, you do a great job over there at the school. It's always happening when I go there, one of my sons is bad, still good. Everything's clean.
Okay.
Good job.
Appreciate those kind words.
I just have one other comment about the capital project. Just, uh, just, um, well, I, I do want to let you know that the board did submit one project, it's, it's a security project. And, um, when we, when we developed, um, Berry and Rockwell, they have, we worked with a, 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 a school security consultant as part of the project. And it has all of the latest security features, um, that, um, schools should have nowadays. We designed those schools with the intent of spreading, um, some of the features into the other schools, so that they all had, uh, compatible security. Well, it won't be a hundred percent, but it would be much closer. Um, and, uh, I offered, if, uh, if, if, it's an only an offer, if you want more details about that, I would request that we go into executive session, because we do not want to be talking about our school security issues in public. Um, and, um, and I would bring in a consultant to help us develop that security proposal, um, so that, to, to, to explain a little bit about what makes up those numbers. But I, I just want to say that, that we would offer that if you want to, but, and what the intent of it was. I, 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 you probably can imagine a lot of the things that are included in that, um, but, uh, that's what that, what that's what that package is. It would get all of our schools at a similar, uh, similar level.
Is the intent to do that in one fiscal year or over several?
We could talk about options. We could, we could talk about phasing options, but I have to, we'd have to go into executive session to talk about it.
Is it all schools or just?
No, it's, uh, John, yeah, three, Berry High School and Middle School. Okay. Cause Rockwell and Johnson get it as part of the project. So, I, I'd want to take it offline and talk about it.
The number in the, in the long-term capital plan is a comprehensive number.
It is. It includes, includes everything.
Then again, nothing specific about your schools.
Right.
But if you had money left in contingency in your other projects, you don't have a lot.
You can't, you can't do.
Trust me, I would do it if I could.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
No, I mean, come on, Brian. You can't be moving the money around.
We can talk about this on the way home.
Yeah.
Okay, please.
You know, Brian, I like my.
Dr. Carver.
So, that's it. I just wanted to offer it.
I'm over time.
We would have to do it in executive session and, uh, and have, I, I would prefer, uh, we could certainly talk to the pieces, but I would bring in the security consultant if we wanted to have that level of conversation.
We would, if, if the board chose to do that, we would have plenty of time next week.
Right.
We'd schedule a special.
So, but, just to Brian's comment, once the projects are done, the contingency goes back to the general fund if it's not used, correct?
Of the projects? Yes, absolutely.
It just stays there.
It's just not borrowed.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's just not borrowed.
It's just not.
Yeah, it's not bonded.
Right, right.
Nothing comes back, it's just no borrowed.
Correct. You don't put money on the credit card, right?
This is a mortgage. This is a long-term debt that we will match fund with long-term debt.
Yes, but, um, correct.
All appropriately so.
I have a question on the adult bathroom.
The adult bathroom?
Fifty, fifty grand. Fifty grand at Berry School?
It's on the capital list.
It's on the capital list.
Right. I don't remember that one. Right.
Actually, it's, um, it's bleachers. Just, oh, fifty thousand bleachers.
At Berry School?
There's a, there's an error in, in this.
Oh, there's an error?
Yeah.
Berry downstairs, adult bathroom.
Oh, no, that's here.
No, the, the capital plan that's listed under building maintenance is actually the enrollment projection. It's the wrong document.
Oh. I, I don't, cause I don't remember a few thousand dollar bathroom.
Yeah. People were wondering. An adult bathroom.
Yeah, who does that mean? Who knows?
Gold fixtures or something.
Don't remember that. Um, Bob, Mr. Nero.
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
So, why do I remember a discussion about those bleachers from the, you know, cause they were supposed to be.
They didn't get done.
Yeah, they were supposed to be electric, you know, to, I remember that we toured the gym and all the things that would, went wrong.
Because that was cut, I had to do something. So, what we did was we went back and, and we tried to do what we can, replace bolts, replace, you know, we, we did some realignment of the, of some of the.
And so, now it needs more repair.
Yeah, cause each time we let it go longer and longer.
We've had some very serious issues back in the past couple of years.
Yes, I've heard.
So, um.
Yeah.
Suck it a lot. Did, did that insurance pay for the thing on top of the roof?
In the gym? I don't know, Terry. Yes.
That's good.
And we have a deductible though.
Of course, but I mean, yeah. You know what that deductible is?
Ten thousand dollars.
Oh.
Wow.
Yeah.
I think the purpose of it.
Listen to me.
What happened to our shelter?
The, the air conditioner staying or it froze off?
The heat exchange.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to, um, the, the chiller project, the middle school's progressing nicely. It should be ready for the fall, and they're, uh, doing phase, the second phase of the high school boilers over April break. They're, uh, baiting the, um, asbestos from, um, the night circa nineteen sixty.
From the last one, yeah, the last one has to come out.
Three of the four are.
So, that's all in good shape and it's all moving along.
The, the chiller will be ready for us.
Right.
Um.
The summer.
You said fall.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, spring. Springs, I would say late spring, early summer.
Yeah, when we need it.
Right.
Well. That's the plan.
Hopefully it will.
Can't be charged the weather. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for entertaining, motion. Oh, wait a minute.
So, do we want to discuss having a meeting or is it something that's?
Do you want to get back to me next week?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what date you're delivering, just so we have, put on the calendar?
Monday, the second. Well, no, no, they're, they're not. Um, I'm, I'm presenting my recommendations to the selectmen at.
On the second?
On the second, on Monday, the second, and then it goes, might be a long night, but then it goes to board of finance on Tuesday, the third.
Okay.
Tuesday, the third.
My idea is the third. Nine, nine, four.
So, in the meantime, I would like to encourage all board members, board of finance, board of selectmen, to follow the, uh, the protocol that board of ed has set up sometime. If you have questions as you study the numbers, you know, and you want more detail on something, send an email to, if it's board of ed related, send it to Terry. If it's town related, send it to Bob. They will make, they will get the answer for you and then send that answer out to everybody, so everybody sees. That way you avoid any FDI problems, but everybody can get the, get the info. Yeah. Are we supposed to get the current, I thought we talked about what the current percent is when you add all the budgets together? Yes, and we're, I'm, we're still working up, uh, revenue. There, there's still some questions, so you, you will still get that. We got, still got a few days to go.
We have one more day of department presentation. That's the expense side. You're asking about increasing expenses. This year, we'd like to have us focused a little bit on the revenue side as well, so that we have a sense of familiarity.
I, just before we close up, your revenue, like Bob was saying, when, you know, we would go to the football games or anything like that, you know, you're paying gate receipts.
That goes towards paying officials.
Gate receipts go towards paying. A money making thing or?
No, it's a money loser.